Good afternoon, welcome to the May 26, 2011 special budget meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Mayor Friedman.
Here. Councilmember Najarian is in an MTA meeting. He asked us to start the meeting and he'll be here as quickly as he can. Can we hear your report, please?
The notice for the May 26, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 19, 2011 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. For you today again is Director of Administrative Services, Finance Regarding Budget Study Session, including GWP Information Services, Internal Service Departments, Police and Fire.
Okay, thank you. We're going to resume with Fire and go to Chief Harold Tygams. Chief, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
It should be.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman.
Got it. Oh, that sounds better. Okay. Good af— I guess I just talk loud. Good afternoon, Mayor Friedman, and council members and city staff. I'll continue Fire's budget presentation and will conclude by going through the balance of our funds. And we will start at slide number 93, which is our hazardous materials fund. So the hazmat fund is an enterprise fund. In next year's budget, it's estimated it'll be a little less than the year before, and that's primarily due to vacancies we have in that fund. And those vacancies equate two positions, two or three positions, but that's what's bringing the fund in under. One of the costs that continues to be a challenge for us is the increase in the disposal of the hazardous waste that we collect.
Mr. Manukian? You go back one slide.
If it's an enterprise fund, shouldn't it be self-sufficient? Are we undercharging for the fees?
I have a slide coming up on that, but we haven't raised the fees since 2001, and that is a factor. And there's another factor involved. When we first started the hazardous waste collection, we were primarily collecting fluids and oils and different things like that. But over the course of time, there's been a number of additional hazardous waste added, like batteries, fluorescent, light bulbs, sharps, syringes, medications, and all those increase our disposal fees. So that is something that we're going to need to address in raising the fees.
Why would you charge overtime?
We do our hazardous waste collections on the weekend, and that's the overtime that's associated with making a time that's convenient for the residents to bring their hazardous waste by the EMC and drop it off.
Thank you.
So these are the positions we have vacant: engineering project specialists, a fire prevention inspector, and an office services assistant, too. Some of the things that we do: hazardous materials disclosure, hazmat release prevention, underground and above-ground storage tank inspections, hazardous waste generator and treatment inspections, industrial waste and pretreatment. And basically, you know, we enforce the California Fire Code in this area. And some of the— some of our numbers: many of you know we have a joint program with La Cuenca, so the residents of La Cuenca can also come via— come by our environmental management center to drop their waste off also. But just some of the numbers: you know, we served over 44,000 households in 2009 and 2010, collected over 142 tons in households hazardous waste, and recycled over 8,000 gallons of used waste oil. New challenges, and I briefly already talked about the different—the different challenges that we have with the waste that we collect. When we started the program in 1991, the number of items on the household hazardous waste list, or the waste list in general, was a lot less than it is right now, and all these different things have been added over the years. And with the environment becoming more and more green, we probably expect more things to be added over time. Yes, sir.
How do you charge? Do you charge per item, or do you charge by bulk, by weight?
Well—
What is the fee in bulk? Is it—
Well—
You come out once and you—
Here's— here's how we charge. For the hazardous waste billing: 55 cents a month on multi-unit residential, 75 cents a month on single-unit residential, and a dollar and— $1.05 a month. And this is assessed on each individual property.
On a monthly basis?
On a monthly basis. That's how it's charged. So there's no charge—
Is it in the utility bill?
Yes.
It goes out on the GWP bill?
Right. And there's no charge when the individuals come by and drop off the items, because it's already paid for.
So if I have a bunch of batteries that I've been saving, I can call and someone will come out and pick them up?
No, you can bring the batteries by. We will come by and pick up your used waste oil and different things like that. So we wouldn't tell you, "You have to bring that by," if you have used waste oil for us to pick up, because we do have a team of people that go out and collect those oils. So you can do that also. But if it's batteries, if it's smaller things, we prefer you bring it by on the weekends. But if it's large amounts, then it'd be better if we come pick up the oil and stuff like that. So there's a couple of different ways. If you need any information on that, you know, you can call our Fire Prevention Bureau, area code 818-548-4810, 4810. And the address is 780 Flower. And every Saturday, we have a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day.
Thank you.
Having gone to that Household Waste Collection Day to drop batteries and stuff off, it's very well attended.
Is it?
There's a lot of people. Sometimes there's a line to get in.
Right. It's a needed service, and our team over at the EMC does a great job there.
Absolutely. I have a bunch of batteries. I don't know where to drop them off, so now I do.
We can take care of them for you.
We do have a bin in City Hall that you could—in our office that you could drop them off.
Oh, do you?
We do.
Okay. Yeah.
Looking forward to going to the facility, but now you ruined it.
Come on by the facility. We'd be happy to bring you there, show you around, and—so you can have a look at the operation, so you can see how efficient an operation it is. But our revenue sources: 39% are from hazardous permit fees, 40% for hazardous billing fees, and I just explained those to you, 18% industrial waste sampling and inspection fees, then 3% for grants that we receive throughout the course of the year. The next fund we'll talk about is Verdugo Fire Communications. Verdugo's budget is—we'll go up to $4 million next year, and that's due to some capital improvements. And just so you have an understanding, and I explained it yesterday, how Verdugo works: we have three partner agencies that manage Verdugo, and we have nine contract agencies that pay a cost per call to Verdugo. And that's how the revenues come in. So Glendale has a portion of that, and it's based on the number of calls we have throughout the year. And the cities of Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena also contribute to the capital. And the reason why our capital and our budget is going up a little bit this year is because we have some scheduled capital improvements with Verdugo Dispatch. We have a 10-year plan for Verdugo on the things that we need to address. We're setting money aside, and we're addressing it as it comes along in our 10-year plan for Verdugo. That's in some of the information that I think I've already sent to you, Councilman Manukian, when you asked a couple of weeks ago about Verdugo information.
Again, overtime. I would like you to address the overtime.
Sure. Let's back up one slide. Verdugo's operation is similar to the fire station operations. We have five dispatchers on during the day and four on during the night. And when one of those dispatchers takes a day off for vacation, sick leave, or any of the leaves that are MOU-agreed, we backfill those positions, because it's like I said with the fire calls, same with the dispatch calls. We know those calls are coming in, and we have to have enough people in our dispatch center to address the calls that come in. We run a really efficient operation in Verdugo Dispatch. Sometimes there may be larger events that take place, and we may need to put an extra dispatcher in place, but primarily, the overtime is for filling vacant positions in Verdugo. We dispatched over 68,000 calls in last fiscal year. 97% of those calls were answered in 60 seconds, and 99% were answered and dispatched within 90 seconds. That's an outstanding rate of us providing that service to the community. And also, just like I touched on a couple of days ago, the ISO was out doing an evaluation of Verdugo, and once again, they complimented us on how efficient that operation has ran, and our score will reflect that from the insurance service offices. Covered a number of these things, but one of the big ones is renegotiating existing contracts. It's important to touch on that again. Since we started bringing in contract agencies in Verdugo since the mid-'90s, as you can imagine, a lot of different contracts were made with different agencies. Our goal—the three cities' goals were to bring that rate to a common rate, and that's taken a great deal of time renegotiating existing contracts, because a number of agencies are below the rate of cost per call. We did a cost allocation on Verdugo Dispatch, and we realized what the common rate should be. Some of the agencies that came into the system eight, 10, or 15 years ago, their rate is a lot lower. And so one of my roles is to renegotiate those contracts and bring the rates up. So far, we've been successful doing that, and we have a few more in the hopper right now that we're working through. The FCC also has a narrowbanding mandate on our radio system. Basically, that's taking the wideband radio system and making it narrowband, so you can have a lot more talk groups on the same—on the same channel in the radio system, so it allows more capacity in the radio system. So that's one of the challenges that we have from the user perspective. We receive grant monies, and we've been programming our portable and mobile radios, but Verdugo also has some of those challenges for the backbone of the system in Verdugo that we need to take care of. And then the last bullet point, a possible integration into the larger L.A. RICX project. That's the Los Angeles area—Los Angeles Regional Interoperability Communication System. That's a project that's been moving for probably four to six years to build out a radio system in L.A. County. One of the discussions there is, can our existing radio system just basically plug into that radio system, or do we need to just remain on our own? So that's going to be something that we're evaluating also. There's new agency potential out there, and we're continuously pursuing grant funds to try to relieve some of the stress on our—on our burden, on our budget. Any questions on Verdugo? Our grant funds. Our grant fund budget goes up and down, just depending on the number of grants that we receive over—the course of time. So you could see next year, it's going down significantly from what it was in the previous year, and that's just when the grant timelines and the grant periods are going to become inactive. Right now, we're probably working in grant years from 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2011. We're closing out the 2008 grant year. They generally give you three years to complete a project, and then we're going to be moving hot and heavy into the next grant years. So as we receive new grants, that number will go up and come down. There's been a lot of challenges in the grant world. Some of you may have heard that the federal budget has been reduced, and the amount of money that is going to local government in major cities like L.A., and New York, and Chicago is going to be reduced. But actually, what happened is our local money for urban areas of L.A. County was not reduced, so we should still be okay in this area. But as we receive more grant funds throughout the year, that $1 million could actually increase as we're awarded different grants. Regional Training Center, maintaining training levels. One of the things that we do with our grant funds is we maintain our specialty training levels with our USAR and our hazmat team, and that's critical for the community. Just about an hour or two ago, we had a truck that had four 30-gallon propane tanks on it, and it had a leak at Chevy Chase in California. Our hazmat team responded to that, took all the necessary precautions, and went in and mitigated the emergency. Those are the type of advantages we have here in Glendale, because we have a hazmat team right here in Glendale, and it would be the same thing for USAR. We use our grant funds to support the training. There's a bigger regional mission associated with these specialty programs. We have 14 hazmat teams throughout L.A. County and 22 urban search and rescue teams throughout L.A. County. So if there's a major event that takes place in here in L.A. County, these are the resources that would respond anywhere in the county to support the mission of solving these problems. So that's why the grant funds are currently supporting the training for these different programs. But declining grant funds will be a continuing problem in the future. We fund two positions from our grants: our grant administrative analyst position, and one of our fire battalion chiefs are funded from the grants. And that's a key for us. They provide very needed service to the community and to the department. And I know one of the questions would probably be, what would happen if you lost the grant and you have these positions? Well, we would close out the positions if we lost the grant, and everyone's aware of that. If we lost the grant for the positions, we would have to close out the positions.
So—
Permanent—
So you terminate the bat chief?
Or we would move them into a vacant position.
Okay.
Yeah. But we wouldn't have the extra staff to absorb into our budget.
Okay, so you have two positions here, right?
We have two. And we're watching for that.
So funding, you'd—
Right.
Either reassign them or lay them off.
Right. But we're covered for a couple of years, so we're okay. So some of the numbers: Homeland Security, that's UAWSI, Urban Area Security Initiatives Grant, 436,000, domestic preparedness grants, 100,000, Assistance to Firefighter Grant. We've been very fortunate the last couple of years. We received two of them, and we applied through Glendale, but on a regional basis. One was for Station Alerting Project, which is going to help our fire stations be alerted even sooner for emergencies, which should help increase our response times. And the other one was to replace our EKG defibrillators that are out in the field. We applied for these grants on a regional basis, and we were lucky over the last couple of years and were awarded the grants. Both of the grants were for well over $1 million, and Glendale had a portion of that $1 million. So it's really helping us well. And then donations from civic organizations has helped support our junior fire program. And there's been a couple of organizations that's helped with that. One is the Insurance Service— Junior Fire, the insurance group? Which one? Yeah. The brokers and agents here locally help support our junior fire program, and also the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club helps support our junior fire program. That's the program that goes into every fifth-grade class in the city of Glendale and teaches the kids about fire safety. And we'll be inviting you all to the picnic that's going to be coming up here real soon, our junior fire annual picnic. Any questions on the grants? Mutual Aid. This is another fund that goes up and down based on our response activity. Some years, our response activity is very high and some is very low. So the 100,000 that we have in for next fiscal year is basically a placeholder. If we are not responding out of the area, there won't be any additional funds coming into that, so there won't be a need to access any of that. But last year, there was about $392,000 that flowed through that that reimbursed our people for responding out of the area.
If I may, the allocation might be incorrect in terms of, how can you have overtime with no salaries, and then isn't your benefits and PERS approximately 50% low?
It's—it's all overtime for those positions.
No, I know, but if you have $96,000 of overtime, you have corresponding PERS and benefits?
On—go ahead and answer. No, I can answer, but—
Overtime doesn't have PERS? It's not PERS-able?
Right. Well, there's not PERS attached on the overtime.
There's what?
There's the 1.5% on the overtime plus the workers' comp rate attached to the overtime. You don't have the medical benefits attached to it, the PERS retirement rate, or all those different things. That's not attached to what we get on the reimbursement.
Okay, and it's—so those benefits are not calculated in the overtime? So overtime is not PERS-able, basically?
Correct.
Okay. So if anyone goes out on these mutual aid things, then it's all overtime? It's not regular time?
It's all—it's—we charge the position that's vacant. So here's an example: if the crew who's working today gets dispatched to Ventura County today for a brush fire—they're on duty today.
Right.
But we have to hire a crew behind them to cover their spots. We would not have had to hire that crew if that crew wouldn't have went to Ventura, so we cover the overtime vacancies behind them through the master mutual aid system. So all those positions are covered with the reimbursements, the overtime spots, not the spots who would have been working anyway.
But we still—if one company goes out, we're still paying two companies. We're just covering just the overtime?
Right.
Do we get reimbursed for the company that goes out, let's say, to Ventura?
No, because they were already at work. The crew who we brought back in to cover the city, that's the extra crew. So that's—
They're all overtime?
Right.
It's all overtime?
Then that's all overtime. Then that's what's covered.
Okay.
But at the end of the year, chief, that particular—let's say it goes on for two days. They had two days of overtime, that particular crew that stayed back in Glendale. At the end of the year, that extra salary that they made was not covered by PERS. We're not on the hook to pay PERS benefits. It's not a part of their overall pension. Correct?
That is exactly right. That—we're not on the hook for any of that, and we get the reimbursements for it. And actually, we get more than we put out for the event. And so let's just say that fire happened, and our crews are going to Ventura to fight a brush fire. Not only do they cover the cost of our people going, they actually cover the cost of our equipment going. There's a cost—a rental cost—for each of our fire engines that go out of the area also to assist, and there's an administrative cost for making all this happen. So there's actually more revenue that comes in to the city from our people responding out of the area. The overtime is the biggest part of the conversation, but there's a benefit to the community, because the last academy that we did, we were able to almost fund that fire academy completely from the extras that come in, from the fire engine rental, the administrative fees. So we placed that extras in a separate account, and we're able to draw on those funds. So when we need to do a fire academy, we don't have to come back to the general fund to ask for $300,000 or $400,000, because there was enough because of our outer-area responses to cover it. So it's been a benefit, actually.
And by the way, who pays? Who's the "they" if you're fighting a fire in Northern California? Or—if you're fighting a fire in Ventura? I mean, two different funding sources, obviously.
It—once it's declared as a state of emergency, generally, the state will pay. And then if FEMA on the federal level declares it as a federal emergency, then FEMA would —would pay.
So chief, we hear complaints sometimes from critics about firefighters making $250,000 a year. When we calculate, or when we—when they're using those numbers, does that include this overtime?
Yes.
So—so those salaries, which the people are earning, but all of that is not coming from the city of Glendale?
That—that's exactly correct. When—when our people are away for 14 days at a time, and they're working every single day for 14 days, they're compensated for those days. But the city is reimbursed. But what that does is it does make it appear that this person is really making a lot of money, and in fact, yeah, they're doing okay, but they're working a lot of hours to earn that salary. So they're earning that salary by fighting whatever brush fires, sleeping in the dirt, not being able to go home and see their families. And sometimes, they may be out for 14 days, and if there's a number of fires burning, they may get a day off, and they come back to work. And if—it's their time to go again, they may have to just go again. But that affects us behind, too, because if we have four or five engines out of town, that means four or five extra crews are going to be working every day with individuals who just aren't going to be allowed to go home. Or we will either mandatory them to tell them, basically, "You can't go home," or we'll emergency-recall them if it's an event here locally and bring them in also. You don't really have a choice when you take the oath to become a firefighter on the days you work, on the days you don't work.
All that is fine, but in general, majority of the overtime is not because of these major fires?
No, it's for staffing, our vacation and our normal days that we have off.
Okay, thank you.
But just to be clear, the only alternative to that overtime, in your opinion, would be to hire more staff?
We would have to have a significant over-hire, and the challenge would be, what happens —once you have an over-hire of more than X, whatever that X number is, let's just say X plus one, or let's say no one takes off that day. Let's say no one takes off a day for an entire month. Well, now you've just absorbed all those salaries to those individuals you hired to cover all those vacancies, and they all have vacation days. And let's say summertime comes, from June to August. Well, even the people who you hired extra to cover the holes are taken off, because those are high use times. So that's the challenge. We could hire more people to cover the vacancies, but that's a challenge in and of itself, because there would be days when we would have extra people without an assigned spot to go to. And I think I covered these three points already. And our special event fund, it operates similar to our mutual aid fund. When there's different events around the community and certain things that—we as a fire department will charge to have a fire and life safety inspector on scene for, and that number ebbs and flows, just depends on how many different events are going on on a regular basis. So for next year, that's just basically what we estimate. If next year's a real active year, the 31,000 could be higher also. And these are some of the things: you know, the fireworks show at the Americana, some of the live entertainment events that take place around town require a fire and life safety officer to be on scene at these different events. So if there's a bunch of them, the numbers would increase. If there aren't very many of them, then the number would be lower. So a recap of all of our funds to conclude: out of our general fund, we're proposing reductions of $426,000, and I covered those a great deal yesterday. And we're also proposing a change to our BLS program, that we believe—to our EMS program, that we will be able to achieve a $1 million savings next year. So in total, it would be approximately $1.4 million in savings in the reductions recommended by the fire department.
And that—that's already in the budget this year?
That's already plugged in.
It's plugged in for next year?
Yes.
Next year's budget, we haven't even dealt with, so this year's number is 426, right?
This is for next fiscal year. That's what we're—
Right.
The budget is not built, but this is what's plugged into the estimates for next year's budget.
Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
Please.
There we go.
Says adopted budget 2010, 2011. Proposed budget 2010, 2011? Should be 1112?
It should be 1112.
Okay, so that's the current—that is the budget we're working on now?
Proposed.
Which you're proposing at $426,000?
Plus.
Plus the following year?
No. That's next year also.
Okay. So it's in the same year?
Yes.
Why isn't it here? In the slide?
I just—I can add it to the slide right now, but that's my fault.
That's confusing me, because you have 426 on the slide, and you were saying 1.5, so—
You're right. You're right. I apologize for that.
Okay, and—and—the years are incorrect, so that's even more confusing, so—
I looked at it a number of times, so I think I probably got blind to certain things. So I apologize for that.
No, that's okay. No.
But just to be clear, so next year, we're proposing a $1.4 million reduction.
11112 fiscal year, you're proposing 1.4.
1112. Yes.
And back when the study session started—I know that seems like a long time ago—the general fund overview had reflected this as part of the operational cuts. And the $1 million he's referring to was one of the additional strategies for closing the gap in the summary of strategies that we did, which is probably why he didn't incorporate it here, because it's not really an operational reduction. It was one of the—one of the standalone strategies that we had discussed and put in that general fund summary sheet.
But it is a general fund.
Yes, it is a general fund, and it is his department's commitment to reducing costs by $1.4 million next year, in the upcoming year.
Okay, any questions? Let me go to the public, and then I may ask the chief to come back up with any—to answer any questions or give any responses. First card, Herbert Milano, followed by Bruce Philpott.
Mayor Friedman, council members, my name is Herbert Milano. I have been asking for quite a long time for the council to consider looking at the cost trends, especially as they have transpired since 10 years ago. I have on my computer a chart that I presented to the— I have on my computer a chart that I presented to the city council at other times during oral communications, during council sessions, concerning the increases in the costs for paramedic during the last 10 years. And if you look at the graph, it will be an exponential growth since year 2001. And also, the costs of the fire department as it pertains to the general fund, also a fairly significant exponential increase. And I think it is, when you look at those trends, that you get a sense of the possibility for us to continue to sustain things as they are. One of the costs that is not considered during the budget study sessions, and I've been attending this for about eight years, is the consideration of what transpires as a result of the memorandum of understanding. I have one here. And I have a few issues that I think the council should consider, especially as you start to negotiate your next MOU. And that is that we allow for a cost of living increases every year, even when there is no inflation. And we provide a significant share of the medical insurance, and medical costs are part of the calculation of the Consumer Price Index. We provide for college education and we provide as well for a bonus after they get a college education and a master's degree. But college education and education in general is part of the Consumer Price Index. So, as firefighters have more and more years in, my presumption is that they already have their own property. The cost of their living also is reduced as they go forward. Consequently, the CPU, as we apply it, is overly generous. But I'm concerned about something else that has been said again and again, is with regard to their share of the pension costs. And I have here, on page 34, the statement that says it is understood that this total 9%, meaning their share of the pension, is added to the salaries by the city and shall be included in all the salary and compensation comparisons. So, if they're now paying 11%, that means that 9% of that was given to the city to basically add it to their salaries from which they pay. And I think that should be clarified when we guard to the consideration of what has transpired. Particularly, I'm concerned with regard to the increases overall in their salaries and benefits, and how that is impacting the overall cost of maintaining the department. Thank you.
Bruce Philpott, followed by Barry Allen.
Mayor Friedman, before I begin, I have a document I'd like to distribute to the council. It has cost benefit of both the council session and the... Oh, this EMS change. And the second is a summary of some of the data associated with that NIST study that Chief Scoggins referred to in his comments yesterday. Well, the clock is on. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council, city staff and the public. My name is Bruce Philpott. I am a resident of Pasadena. And yes, Mr. Weaver, this is still America. The cost benefit analysis, as provided by Management Partners, option does the following. Eliminates all four ALS ambulances. It converts them to BLS ambulances. It staffs all nine engine companies with two firefighter paramedics. There are already two firefighters on those engines, and four of those engines already have one firefighter paramedic. One or both firefighter paramedics onboard the engine companies will be on the ambulance as it transport all ALS patients to the hospital. That will take approximately one hour per run, according to the consultant. The benefits of that program, it saves $2 to $2.5 million for the first two years. It increases the number of firefighter paramedics on duty from 12 to 18 per shift. The costs, the savings are completely depleted by year 2013. The time engine companies are out of service on medical calls more than doubles, from 16 minutes per call to over 31 minutes per call, requiring many more out-of-district responses that delay arrival times. This is already a growing problem in that Glendale Fire Department has the slowest response time as compared to both Burbank and Pasadena. That is sources at Vertigo Communications Center response times on all 11 cities under their jurisdiction. There's an unknown cost of driving instruction and other forms of training for 84 new employees. The civilians that would man the four, the five BLS cannot work more than 1,000 hours a year, or benefits kick in. There were 84,000 hours to staff that operation, that is, 84 bodies. They're paid at $15 an hour and receive no compensation in terms of benefits. However, they will soon organize as a union, once they're onboard, and like the lifeguards of LA County, will begin to negotiate. Lifeguards started at $15 an hour, today they're being paid about $100,000 a year. The loss of four ALS rescue ambulances staffed by the two firefighter paramedics each, they will be gone.
Finish up.
Can I ask him a question regarding these notes? During our discussions, we talked about four versus three-person ladder. And you stayed here, that ladder tracks the staffing of the ladder trucks. The NIST study affirms staffing that four crews were 25% faster.
Yes, it affirms.
And then you state another study from Dallas, Texas, that says three-person crews can perform just as fast.
Well, we have to distinguish two pieces of that.
Are these studies relevant?
There's an engine company and then ladder companies. I would propose that you staff engine companies with three, like LA County. But you still have to staff the ladder companies with four, because they are truly 25% more efficient. They have to make the forcible entry and do ventilation before entry can be made by the ground attack crews.
Is LA County, is LA County staffed with three or four?
They staff their trucks with four as well, but they staff their engines with three.
Okay.
And I'm proposing we staff like LA County, both in truck and engine staffing. Because 25% is significant. That's five additional minutes
Right.
To vent a vertical vent on a structure fire. That's a long time compared to a three-person truck company.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Last card, Kristopros. Oh, I'm sorry. Barry Allen, followed by Kristopros. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council staff. I'm Barry Allen. I understand that Mr. Weaver was a little bit apoplectic yesterday when I wasn't here. And so, I will read that document into the letter that became an issue yesterday. And I have a difficult time accepting the numbers thrown out by the fire management. In the past, the GFD convinced council to throw out the $475,000 a year contract for an outside ambulance service. As if the GFD did the ALS and supported and transported, it could earn $17 million. As we have seen, that was not the case, as the GFD has had to, the RAs had to be subsidized by the city council and the general fund. Today, they are asking to turn the clock back, with the exception that they will turn the RAs into transport vehicles and use $15 an hour people. They can only work a limited number of time before they can be recruited into the GFPA. The numbers they provide can't be trusted. The Wildan Report on Fire indicates that if council approves the recommended fee hikes to full cost recovery, the GFD will be able to bring in $107 million a year. I suggest a look at the Wildan Report on page 60, line 41, where the fire department states the full cost recovery for inspections of high and mid-rise buildings is $5,325, while they charge today $1440. They propose to raise over $28 million a year on those inspections. It's unbelievable. And I also suggest that you look at page 61, line 59 of the Wildan user fee study. Inspection of 100-bed acute care hospitals, they propose to raise $28,356,000 off of that, out of the taxpayers' pockets, and then reduce life support services. Now, the question that came up today is also regarding the full cost recovery of a full cost burden of a fire engineer is $209.47 an hour. You'll find that on page 38, which brings in, according to 100-day schedule, about a half a million dollar cost to the public. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Kristopros.
Hi again, Kristopros, Captain, Glendale Fire Department, President, Glendale Fire Association. I don't have any prepared remarks. I'll make two comments about Mr. Philpott's, what he said. This is going to save you $2.3 million forever. That's just a fact. That's what it is. And I'm very comfortable with that number, $2.3 million. You can mark my words, watch the tape 10 years from now. The other thing is, Los Angeles County Fire Department actually staffs their engines with both three and four. About 40% of the engine companies in the county of Los Angeles are staffed with four people. So, that's just wrong. And most of their outlying stations, places like Acton, some of the really far-out places have three. Many of the inner-city departments, Elmani, have four. The last thing I'll say is, the GFPA doesn't have any intention of representing these individuals. They're hourly employees. They're not represented by any group. If they were non-sorn, they would be represented by GCA. And with that, I'll just say, if you have any questions for me, I'm willing to answer them on the record without any notes.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I will ask Chief Scoggins to come back up, and I know you've just seen this material. Did you get the handout from Mr. Philpott? I was just hoping you could address some of his concerns.
Which handout are we talking?
The cost benefit analysis.
Well, the dollar an hour rate is not $15 an hour, so that's wrong.
What is it?
I think it's about $13 an hour to start off, and then there's steps after that. It, we recommend hiring 60, not 84. But the key is not how many hourly employees we hire, because 84 would be 24 above 60, but there's still only a certain amount of hours to fill. And that's what the goal is, to fill the hours of the positions that we reduce down to hourly, non-sorn EMTs. It's eight positions a day times 365 days a year, 24 hours in a day. I mean, it's a big number, but it's a big number now in the amount of hours. We're filling it. Our proposal is to fill the positions at an hourly rate that's about a third of the cost today. That's just what the facts are. And like Captain Stavros touched on, you know, Mr. Philpott mentioned that the county staffs with three. They have 157 engines as of about six months ago. 55 of those engines are staffed with four-person staffing. 55. So, the communities that choose to pay for four-person staffing, they do that. The communities in some of the more rural areas, when they don't have as many hazards in the community like we do here in Glendale, with mountain ranges and freeways and industrial issues and high-rise and dense urban area populations, they staff with three. The communities that choose to pay for four, staff with four. They do that. That's just what the reality is. And even in the Dallas study he referred to, it said staffing with four is the best model. Now, he can misrepresent it by saying it's almost as good, but that's not what it said. It said staffing with four was better. And that's what the reality is. So, the cost benefit, this is a real cost benefit. We know it because we put one of the units in service January 27, 2010. We know there's savings associated with the transition. We know that.
Which transition?
From taking RA-22 out of service and adding our first BLS unit in service.
Mr. Cantaro?
On the question of inspecting the high-rises and the acute care of 100-plus hospitals, are we in fact basically charging a lot less than our actual cost?
We are charging a lot less than our actual cost. And the Wildan numbers that Mr. Allen referred to, obviously, it's an astronomical number and it's not a number that we would charge the community and rate. If we had a plan to raise $28 million for charging for inspections, do you think I would be in front of you talking about pulling firefighters out of service? I mean, that's just an unrealistic thing. And then with Mr. Milano's comments, a lot of slides that he show you and talk to you about relating to the fire department, they're just flat-out wrong. I've been here at council meetings and I have told him personally that we did not get raises for any of the last two years. But he includes raises in the slides he shows. And he says, "Well, that's not what the MOU says." Well, come on, Mr. Milano. Get the right MOU. Get the one that's online. So, it's a lot of misinformation that's coming forward to you.
On the issue of the actual charges for these high-rises, I mean, I have no idea why we would not be charging those property owners of these multi-multi-million-dollar buildings exactly what it costs for us to inspect those buildings. I mean, we're doing them the favor. You have trained fire marshals and other inspectors going into these units, most of which are owned by multinational corporations, banks, et cetera. Why in the world are we not getting what it's costing us to inspect?
Let me go to Mr. Starbird.
Yeah, let me just note that we're talking about astronomical numbers, and I think there's an error here in the way somebody's interpreting the numbers. Let me take an example. High-rise buildings, this is from the Wildan study. High-rise buildings includes three hours of inspection time. They say a fully burdened cost recovery could be $1,114. We're charging $480. The total revenues would be $26,733, not $26,733.
Right, but regardless of what it is, I mean, just overall, it's different for a small, you know, triplex or duplex, et cetera, directly affects the renter, the property owner. But for the buildings on brand or the large industrial concerns, Disney, DreamWorks, et cetera, for these large corporations, let's charge exactly what it is that it costs us to, you know, whether we make any money or not, but at least we recruit.
We met with Armin from finance about a week or so ago and went through each of our line items in fire in the Wildan report and refined those numbers to what they should reflect closer. And those are the numbers that you'll be seeing when Armin does his presentation on the Wildan report.
Is that part of the budget process?
Yes, and you'll have the ability to set those fees. The strategies in the budget includes $1.3 million in increased revenues as a result of increased fees in a whole host of different areas. This is one the fire department could very well come forward and recommend we increase our $480 fee to an $1,100 fee for a high-rise inspection. And if we did that, based on numbers of inspections, I would raise about $27,000 in the course of the year.
So, you're saying that the number that Mr. Allen represented as $28 million is actually $27,000?
There's an earlier table in the report that summarizes the increase, which there was an error made when they brought the numbers from one table to another table. They added three zeros to it, which is wrong.
Mr. Allen is not incorrect.
He's not crazy.
He's not incorrect. He's reading a number that's incorrect in the Wildan study.
The report is wrong.
That's right. Because they took that revenue, if you go to the detailed table that backs that up, that number reflects $26,733 for a certain type of high-rise. So, it's not millions of dollars in revenues, it's thousands of dollars in revenues. Not Mr. Allen's fault, Wildan's. Not Mr. Allen's fault, Wildan's fault, and we need to have them correct that table.
I thought we found $28 million. I'm very disappointed.
Now, however, if we charged $1,114,000 for the same inspection, then we might be able to raise $28 million.
Any other comments?
Yeah, my, again, my concern, and from the beginning, it's been my concern, is the overtime and the staffing levels. And I want to make sure that I understand, and you respond to the issue of four versus three. You said some communities choose to have four, some communities choose to have three. The taxpayers of Glendale aren't choosing, and I'm asking the question, can we have some of the engines have three firefighters where we can cut down on the overtime and save in that manner as well? You also mentioned fire season, which is June to August, where you have to increase the staffing for the fire department. Is there any way we can have certain months of the year, the winter time, or certain months where, in general, we don't have high activity, three to an engine, not the latter, but the engine, and then staff up back again during high fire season? Is that a possibility? Is there any other way? Are there any other staffing strategies that you have looked at, or you and the city manager have looked at and decided that it's not the proper strategy, and you haven't presented it here, and maybe it would be something that we would be interested in? Is there anything else that you have discussed internally in terms of strategies?
Councilmember Manoukian, I present to the council what I feel as a fire chief is the best strategy for the city of Glendale. And that strategy comes with the reducing of 21 sworn firefighter positions. Now, the brush fire season is what I think you're referring to, and you said from June to August. We live in Southern California. We live in a different type of environment. We can have brush fires any time of the year, and that's only one aspect of it. And that's why I took the time to talk to you about the residential study and the EMS piece to it. And just so you're aware, the busiest months for calls in the fire department, they aren't during the brush fire season. They're during the winter months. That's when we're really running the wheels off of our fire engines, from the range, the EMS calls, the traffic accidents, and different things like that. They're actually our busiest months. So to reduce staffing in those months, it wouldn't be the right thing to do. And that's why with the 21 positions that we're recommending, that the council accepts this proposal, we would still have the ability to move patients in a rapid manner, make a quick initial attack on structure fires, and then have an outstanding response on wildland incidents. It covers the major issues that would go on here in the community. So right now, what I recommend to the council is the best plan, I think, for the community with a reduction.
And if I can, let me respond to your broader question about what we have discussed. Our conversations have gone back over the last three years, in which we've faced the economic downturn and the implications in our general fund. And I completely support the chief in his view of, for an urban city with the hazards we face, four-person engine companies is the proper staffing. But two years ago, we began to have conversations about how can we reduce costs, not just focused on overtime, but how can we reduce costs? And as the years have gone by, and our deficit has gotten greater, and the threats to our resources have gotten greater, I continue to turn to the chief and say, "We need to find a way to reduce costs." The last thing I'd like to do is do what we see neighboring communities do, which is either shuttering stations, taking equipment out of operation, that's happened the last several years, if you look at some of our neighbors, or having to go to even additional three-person engine companies. And with that, they came up with the first thought about the first phase of the BLS program, $700,000, $800,000 a year. And my response was, that's exactly the kind of thinking we need, is not just shuttering stations, not just taking people off of trucks, but finding a different way to deliver services. This Phase II of the BLS, I think, is a very good option, to having to consider the other kinds of reductions in service levels, which I think put the community at risk, but could frankly be necessary if we didn't find a way to reduce costs. Now, the implementation of the BLS program, however, will limit your ability to reduce service levels through staffing on engines. You know, admittedly, I mentioned that when Harold started his presentation, because the four-person engines become even more critical to delivering the advanced life safety services when needed, because they then do become your front line of attack and delivery of services on those calls, which are the bulk of the calls that we have in the course of a year. So it is a trade-off. If you did what Mr. Phil Pott's suggesting, yes, you could save $5.4 million a year, you'd have three-person engine companies across the community, and you'd have a significant degradation of your ability to respond to service calls. I believe even the advanced life support calls, where I had described my experience watching six people respond to an ALS. On the other hand, the BLS program, I believe, is a way to balance those interests, to try to maintain the optimal complement of people on an engine while looking for ways to reduce costs.
I could also make a comment on more of a macro level, on big-picture level. Throughout the state of California, and also in LA County, fire resources have been reduced by probably 10% to 15% throughout the state. Well, you may ask yourselves, why is that important to Glendale? That means that when we have large events that happen here in the community that we call for automatic aid and mutual aid, it's going to do a couple of things. It's probably going to take them longer to get here to help, and we're probably going to get less help than we did a couple of years ago. So having the resources to do outstanding initial attack becomes even more critical for the community when resources are being reduced all throughout the state. That's one of the decisions that I'll have to make on how many resources come out of our area, when I know the resources here in Area C are being reduced. We won't be able to send as many strike teams. Maybe two years ago, we were able to send four out of the area. Well, this summer, we may only be able to send two. And that has a ripple effect all throughout the state. So we won't get help as fast as we did a couple of years ago because so many resources are being reduced. So there's a bigger picture behind this.
Excuse me, Mr. Quintero, hold his hand up. Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I wanted to make a few comments yesterday after the BLS. In the interest of time, I chose not to talk too much about that particular issue. So in terms of the history, I was not on the city council at the time, but I do remember the discussion, and I was good friends with the fire chief, and good friends with the fire chief that had just retired, and good friends with the person that eventually became the fire chief. So I wasn't that convinced that financially it was going to be a boon to the city. However, having worked with some of the ambulance companies through 20-plus years, 25-plus years, I wasn't that impressed with the ambulance companies. The personnel turnover, then there was the big move by companies to buy out the smaller companies, a sort of consolidation of the industry. So all in all, I thought to myself, I don't know financially it's going to particularly make any money for the city, but there's no question it's going to be a better service for the city of Glendale. And I'm convinced, and in fact, it has been a much better service than what we had years ago. So that's one point. Now, to the issue of doing what you're proposing, chief, I do like the suggestion. I think it's going to work in terms of efficiency and in terms of service, and perhaps it will save us some money. But I just like the idea of, number one, keeping four on an engine, and then, number two, I like the idea of the hourly EMTs. I like the idea that it's a training tool. The managers themselves, the fire chiefs and captains and so forth, will be observing these men and women as they work for the city of Glendale on an hourly basis. They'll know who has a work ethic, who's good under pressure, who shows up, et cetera, et cetera. So I think it's going to be a great training tool, having these, I assume are going to be mostly younger people in these positions, and they obviously, as the fire department personnel retire, these will be great to backfill. But one of the reasons I like having that, would it be 60-plus EMTs?
Yes.
Right. One of the reasons I like having the 60-plus EMTs under contract, so to speak, is just this idea, I mean, we live in Southern California. Maybe you don't even have to live in Southern California. Look at what's happening in Oklahoma and Missouri and so forth. I mean, this is kind of a time of great disasters. Earthquakes, in this particular case, we have the hillside potential flare-ups, which I visited the Oakland area after they had their great fire, and that was a total shock. An even bigger shock was going down to San Diego, going to Rancho Bernardo, and observing what I saw there in San Diego. I saw it on TV, and my wife made a comment about that particular fire, and I said, "No, that's not where we go, because where we go, there are no trees. So this must be another area." No. It completely destroyed those neighborhoods, and there was very little canopy-type of trees. Then we have our industrial corridor with all, I mean, that continues to be just that, and continues to be an industrial corridor on San Fernando Road with all kinds of ingredients for potential flare-ups, all of the different services that are performed there. And then finally, we have our high-density neighborhoods with immigrant population, in many cases, monolingual, with older people. I mean, we've got potentials in this city for what I would call a great disaster, and it can happen in any of the places that I mentioned, and of course, the high-rises, and including earthquakes. The city hall parking structure pancaked in the last earthquake, which was centered in North Ridge, not in this area, not part of a potential fault along Dodger Stadium and so forth. But that pancake, and so did the Galleria. Thank God it happened in the early morning, and no one was there. So, I mean, I just don't feel comfortable going to a situation where we have less firefighters. It just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, we're a city that I think financially, we're going to have to cut left and right. There's a lot of things we need to do, but I don't think we're at the point where we have to compromise in this particular sector. I just, I mean, it's like insurance. No one likes to pay, I pay a little extra for a little extra coverage in my house. No one likes to pay that. But in fact, you should, if you want to be comfortable, if you want to feel comfortable. And so that's how I feel about this issue. I'm looking forward to working out the details to see how we can go forward, and I think it's going to result in better service and more efficient service, and hopefully, yeah, it will save us money at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Those are my comments.
Well, I was going to comment regarding the comment that the chief made regarding having companies go outside the city. I think we should be staffing for the city, and regardless of what happens outside, if we have extra, we can always lend our companies to other jurisdictions if they need it. But I think in terms of staffing, we should be staffing what's for the city, what's best for the city, not necessarily for outside of the city. I do have issues. I do like the BLS program as well. I just am not comfortable with hiring a new class of employees, 60 employees, that will sooner or later unionize and ask for benefits and negotiate higher salaries, and we'll have another class of employees that we're going to have to deal with. I would rather contract it out. As you mentioned, some other cities have contracted out that service as well, so I don't see why we can't do the same. And if these contracted-out services, if you mention yourself that some of the individuals that work there want to come and work for fire departments, you can still look at the individuals who work there, and if you need to recruit from them, you will see how they're working, their work ethic, as Mr. Quintero said, and you can recruit from them as well. In terms of staffing and overtime, that is a key issue for me, and I think the overtime that has been budgeted, it seems like, and if you look at the slides, Slide 19, which is the general fund, and it's the same with all the others, all the other slides, the overtime amount is the same thing, that is exactly the same thing to the penny to what is being budgeted, to what was budgeted in 2010, 2011. That means there was no process to determine what the actual overtime that would be needed for the following year. It was $4,28,344 last year. This year, you're proposing to budget the same amount, exactly, $4,28,344. And if you look at the other, if you look at the other slides, and you're doing the same thing there. Fire Department Fire Paramedic Fund overtime last year, 2010, 2011, $656,250, and you're budgeting the exact same amount this year. You're not budgeting for need, you're budgeting based on what you spent last year, and that's not a proper way of doing budgeting, and I disagree with that. I don't see why you cannot, since you already have one fire engine that is staffed with three firefighters, not three firefighters, but three individuals, I know they're not all firefighters, I don't see why you cannot allocate your personnel in such a manner where, if your need is higher, you staff it with four people; if your need is not higher, staff it with three people. And if, you should have the need data over the past few years, probably over the 10 years, what you needed in which areas, how many firefighters or how many engines you needed. In certain areas, you can, in my opinion, you can schedule your personnel in such a manner where you can cut down on the overtime. Arbitrarily allocating overtime amounts to the budget, I oppose, and I will not be voting for it, so.
Councilman Manoukian, if I can just make a comment. When someone calls 911, you can't have that data to say that. But over the last five hours during my presentation, I presented a great deal of data on the number of calls we respond to, the types of calls we respond to, why our stations are located, why they're in the positions they are for response times, and the type of calls we respond to. To me, that's a great deal of data. Now, on the allocation of overtime, that one, it's out of my hands. I can tell you exactly how much leave each one of our employees or allot annually, and I can make a recommendation to plug that number in if that is a more appropriate way to do it, and that would give you a sense of how much leave each employee has, and then we can get it down to an exact number. But whether they use that leave that year, that's really not up to me. They can bank that leave, they can build their sick leave bank, but we can put that number in each and every year. But the data, we have presented 115 slides, and a lot of them were numbers and charts and graphs, and I can continue to sit with you and talk with you about the data, and we can go see some of the incidents. But when that call comes in, it's important to have a certain level of staffing each and every day. And the minimum level that I recommend is four on an engine and four on the truck. And it's like I said yesterday, if the council desires, you can lower that number as a policy decision, but that's not what I would recommend.
That's not what I was referring to. I was referring to the budgeting process, and when you budget the exact same amount to the penny from last year to this year, I'm talking about the process and the thought process, it just indicates to me, as a professional, you know your fire department, and I know budgeting, being a CPA. It just indicates to me, and Mr. Elliott can verify that, there was no actual study done in terms of what should be budgeted and not taking the number from prior year to this year. Second, in any organization, there's always allocation that is made in terms of personnel, and there's always, companies and enterprises always strive to allocate their individuals and their workforce in a manner that will be optimal for that organization. Basically, that's what I'm referring to. I would like... I would like to see all the departments, not just the fire department, and I raise this issue with every department, the allocation of overtime. I would like to see all the departments allocate their workforce in a manner where it minimizes the overtime that we are paying as taxpayers of the city. And that's what I'm referring to, not necessarily attacking a fire or, and I accept your recommendation because you're the expert, and I will accept that. However, you know, in terms of budgeting and personnel allocation, that is my expertise as well, so, thank you.
Well, Chief, would it be possible for you to come back with an overtime budget that's based on either your experience with, I'm assuming that that is based on the experience, the overtime that you spent last year? But I, is, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Manoukian, you're asking for a more detailed study of how that overtime budget breaks down? In other words, how much of that is what you project as sick leave? How much of that is vacation time?
I can, I can bring that back to you.
Okay, maybe that would be helpful.
Yes.
Mr. Starbuck, quick question. Mr. Starbuck, in terms of these hourly employees unionizing, what, what is their right to unionize if they're hourly? Is there a certain threshold in terms of how many hours they have to work?
A thousand.
Is that, is that a real?
I think under the Myers-Millus-Brown Act, I think any group of employees has the ability to organize and be represented. So whether you're part-time or full-time, you have the, have the ability in the Myers-Millus-Brown Act, I believe, to be, to, to organize and to be represented. There are some limitations on who you can organize with, and then, of course, you can, you can ask for anything, but it needs to be a mutual agreement. So if we create a program that these are going to be hourly positions, if indeed they were to organize, they, they may be able to, you know, request certain things, but it's up to you, the city council, to, to grant it and to say, yes, you can structure the programs, and we have management rights that we can organize and direct the workforce the way that we see fit, and you can set policy as you see fit. Ultimately, what it requires is, you may have to sit down and meet and confer, which means talk about it, but it doesn't mean you have to necessarily reach agreement nor allow them to, to, you know, become anything more than what you've designed the program to be. Right, Mr. Garcia?
Okay, Mr. Quintero?
Yeah, I'm sorry, if I, if I can't. We, we have, in the neighborhood of 400 to 600 part-time employees now, hourly employees now, and we have had, or longer than, than any of us have been with the city. So it's not as if we are unaccustomed to having lots of hourly employees. We have lots and lots of hourly employees.
Well, I was going to say, I have no problem if this group someday decides to organize. Have no, I have no issues with that, or get together with Jase. GCEA is some sort of subgroup. I'm sure they're interested in educational pursuits and permanent employment and lots of other things, so it's not, to me, wouldn't be the end of the world. Let me ask you, in terms of overtime in general, I mean, I assume you're working with the battalion chiefs, with the individual captains? I mean, do you do everything you can to try to hold down overtime hours?
Yes, we do everything we can. We have a, a number of things that go on in the fire department each and every day, and we don't hire overtime for all of those spots. We have meetings that take place, we have medicals that some of our people are required to have, we have so many things that go on, and we move people around to accommodate these different things. All of our management team, our command team, all of our fire captains, every person in the organization is aware that the goal is to keep our overtime hours at a minimum and on an absolute need. Staffing the positions are the absolute need, but we aren't filling a lot of different things that go on in the organization, and we move people around. Here's an example. When we would do backgrounds and we would go do residence checks, we would send two people. So we would send the 40-hour, the 40-hour arson investigator, and we would take one of our platoon, our 40-hour arson investigator is also our background investigator, and we would also take one of our background investigators from the platoon that's working that day, so it didn't impact us on overtime, and we would go and do the background residence check. So we saved eight to 10 hours of overtime, but the other side of that is, we've run a company down for a few hours to try to save overtime. So there's, there's the, you know, kind of the give-take there, and we, we do that, because we are aware, we, we do understand the impact. And also, on the BLS program, it's currently set up as a, a three-year program, so, you know, I, I think under a three-year umbrella, it'd be difficult if people come in knowing that it's a three-year program, because the intent is, these are, this is the future, not just for the Glendale Fire Department, but we expect these young people to get hired all over. Obviously, we can't hire them all here, so we, we try to instill that mindset that you should be moving forward, preparing yourself for the future, and most of them has a goal of becoming a firefighter, so they, they really will transition in and out after three years, and, and I don't believe, and anything could happen, that they would be concerned about organizing as a union and, and doing these different things.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
I don't need you, Chief. If you want to sit down, have some water. I'll take the same approach as you, Chief, macro comments on it. I think this city has always tried to hire the best employees in this city, especially when it comes to the heads of departments. We went out and we hired the best fire chief we could possibly get, and I have every competence in him. I don't presume to say that, that the chief knows, doesn't know as much as I do about being a fire chief. No matter what sector it's in, I don't see any executive trying to cheat the people of this city by stockpiling monies aside or inflating numbers, not when I sit over there every single day, and I know city staff has sat in closed-door meetings on the budget for literally months now, trying to desperately to cut down to what has now become 18 million. I think they're inflating everything, putting too much overtime in whatever, no. You have to do something along that line. I do know on the macro level, whenever I go to an event, like yesterday, which was for the police awards, or for the fire, they're jammed. The hotels, ballrooms are jammed, 400, 500 people. And if it's an event where it's not featuring them, and they introduce them, our chief, the police chief get outstanding ovations. Council members get a little. The people love the fire department and the police department in this city because of what public knows that they do for them. You know, if, if the public thought they were getting scammed by the fire and police, like some people here today try to say, we'd know about it. They know they're getting good service. Sitting here, I think I heard coming in today, the average population in our state is now over 45 years of age. It's an aging population. In this city, we have, I think, more than the average of seniors, and they're going to need more paramedic service as time goes. I remember sitting with a fire chief, I think two fire chiefs back, and he told me about the paramedic program, he was going to be bringing this to the city council in the near future. What I think logic just told me, that kind of system made a lot more sense when you had nine fire stations that could send people out on calls, the average time would have to drop, rather than having them deployed out of an office on Broadway. There's no way the two systems could compete. I may not be a CPA, but I did federal budgets for over 10 years and received high recognition for doing that. Those budgets were well over the hundreds of millions of dollars annually, and I used to do current year, past year, future year, and then five and 10-year spreads out. The further out you go, the less you know. Statistically, you look what has occurred in the past, and in some cases, you're required to make your best estimates on what you see in the coming year. You can argue, well, you shouldn't have the exact dollar of overtime as the last year, and you should round them out to 000. Oh, big deal. What's, what's the difference? You're guessing, you're looking at statistics, and you're trying to give the council members the best idea of what they may expect. But in a city like this, we have so many natural disasters that could occur, in a city, there's no way to program it with any degree of accuracy. You make a best guess. As I said, based on all the meetings staff has been held on, or even, even the departments have gone at each other, challenging each other for what each one has put in. I can't conceive that the public is being cheated or this council is being lied to. I support everything the chief said. I think it's the way to go. I believe in him, and I believe what he tells us, and what his, his command under him tells him that tells us. So I'm perfectly happy with it. Sorry you had to go through over 100 sites to try to convince us. As far as giving me detail of the breakdown of overtime, I don't. I've delegated that, and if you tell me that's what it is, that's fine with me. Others can choose to disagree. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Clearly, Mr. Weaver is not a CPA, and I thought we were commenting on the fire budget, not what each council member is talking about, but it's because of people like you who've been doing the budgeting, that's why the federal government's going broke.
Thank you, Mr. Manoukian.
Just, you're not, you're not a CPA. Don't mention anything about CPAs.
Hey, you're the one that brought it up.
There are certain, there are certain techniques.
You brought it up. Keep your comments to yourself.
There are certain techniques that you have to use for budgeting.
Oh, come on.
Know nothing about it, don't talk about it, don't stick your foot in your mouth.
Don't tell me that I don't know what I did as a career.
Okay.
Twice your age. I've been around a lot longer than you have.
And you still don't know anything.
Let's get back dealing with the budget, please.
You want me to leave?
Chief, yes, please.
And shut him up. I made my, he made his statement, he made his statement, I made mine.
Do you take cars home? Does any of your batch chiefs take cars home?
Okay. You're not running a meeting, then I'm leaving.
I ask the police department the same thing.
I made my comments after his, that ends it.
No, 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 he can have questions.
He's coming back? I'm not going to sit here and debate.
I ask the police department the same thing. I'll ask you the same thing. Your personnel take your car home?
Yes.
Cars home?
Yes.
Police take their motorcycles home? Do you take cars home? And why? Thank you.
My 40-hour battalion chiefs take vehicles home, which is one, two, three. Our deputy fire chief takes a vehicle home. I take a vehicle home. Our arson investigator takes a vehicle home. Our 40-hour captain, who's a training and safety captain, our EMS captain, and our PIO, eight, nine cars go home in the fire department. All these vehicles are response-ready. All of our equipment is in the vehicles. We have radios and all the things we need in these vehicles. We take these vehicles home because we have trigger points in our system. If a second alarm fire goes off and we get the page, certain chiefs need to respond in. If a third alarm goes off, certain chiefs need to respond in from their home. If firefighters are injured or hurt, certain chiefs need to respond in. I generally respond in on all of them. I keep all of my gear in my car, just as all of our other chiefs. We're EMS-equipped in our car. I stop, I'm a service to the community many times, going home, coming here for traffic accidents. I have EMS, I have defibrillator in my car. Haven't had to use that one yet, but I have, have had to use a lot of other stuff. So our people are on the clock 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they know if they're in that car and something goes wrong, no matter where they are, they're a public servant.
There's also been, sorry, I'm asking these questions a little late. I should have asked during the budget, during your presentations, but there's always, there's been some criticism that some of your batch chiefs have drivers. Is that necessary? Is that true? I don't know, I'm asking this question.
Right. Not some of our batch chiefs, only our operations battalion chief, the one who manages all nine fire stations, 12 fire companies a day. So our on-duty battalion chief has a staff assistant. It's a lot more than the driver. The person's responsible for accountability on incidents.
Is it a firefighter?
It's a firefighter. The person is responsible for accountability on incidents, managing resources. So the ops chief, who's generally there alone for a long period of time, can start commanding the incident, and we can capture our resources. Daily staffing that takes place for 57 people out of nine different facilities a day, with all the things going on with training and, and local, state, and federally mandatory training classes, is pretty challenging. So it's a lot more than a driver. A driver is really an understatement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Mr. Starbuck?
I'm glad Mr. Manoukian raised the, the driver issue, because it's, it's been part of the scuttlebutt for, long before, I think, any of you were on the council. This driver, does he drive that individual to and from his home?
No.
No. I mean, it's not, it likes to be labeled a driver, as, as you may see a supervisor who actually has a driver who actually drives them to and from work. This is a person who drives the car while the chief takes command of an operation before even getting on the scene. That's really what it's all about. That person may drive that vehicle, but it's only because the other individual has to be doing work while they're going to and from. It's not a driver that drives them and, you know, to and from their home, or to pick up something at the store, or to come to a meeting. It's a driver and assistant who's there, who happens to drive the vehicle so the command chief can take command of the operation before they ever arrive.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So who are we going to next? Mr. Elliott?
Would you like, can I suggest a brief break?
Sure. Why don't we just take five minutes? We're going to Bob Elliott for the next presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Okay, can we have quiet in the chambers, please?
Well, I promise we'll make this less than three or four hours. Cover the Finance Department budget, budget, which includes our general fund component and one internal service funds, one internal service fund, the liability fund. Before I get into that, I will give a brief overview of the internal service funds. Mr. Doyle's going to follow with HR, which has a number of the benefit internal service funds, so I thought I'd get a little overview. We'll go through our mission statement real briefly, same pattern as all the other departments. I'll go through the general fund, so on and so forth, and the 612 liability fund, as I mentioned, and then we'll do a recap. Our mission statement, with excellence, integrity, and dedication, the Finance Department is committed to providing timely, accurate, clear, and concise information to the city council, city manager, city departments, and the citizens of Glendale. As financial stewards of the city, the Finance Department is dedicated to managing the city's resources in a fiscally conservative manner while maintaining an exemplary level of customer service. And, you know, for us, our customers are really the, the departments that we serve. We are a back-office function. We look at our customers as all the other departments and, and treat them as, as best as we can with the resources we have. Our organizational structure, fairly simple. It's broken down basically into the, into the components that we have, our administration, purchasing, budget, accounting, and a portion of risk management. Again, that's a liability fund. The other larger component of risk management is in the HR department, and you can see that on our detailed org chart that we've handed out. So within our breakdown of our professional or management, professional, technical, non-management, you can see our breakdown by division. We have 10 supervisors or managers within, out of the 33 total that we have. Again, most of our, even our non-management folks are professionals on the accountant-one, accountant-two level, or account, or accounting service specialist. And then in the risk management.
Well, excuse me one moment.
On your, the managers, are they generally degreed people, accounting, finance, who are?
Yes. Yes. Everybody in the management category has at least a bachelor's degree, if not a master's degree or higher. Each one of them supervises at least several people. For example, in payroll, we have one payroll supervisor. She's a certified payroll professional. She supervises a core of the other four within the section. Accounting, we have the accounting administrator, and then three senior accountants, which are all management level, and they have a number of accounts or accounting services specialists underneath them. So everything's broken out into the, into the sections with, within the department. Within the risk management department, again, there's, there's a Within the risk management department, again, there's a couple folks from risk management in the liability fund that are budgeted, two managers, actually a risk manager and an executive analyst, and then one administrative associate to handle that entire operation. As far as numbers go, those are our general fund and liability fund budgets. We'll go into the detail as we get through. Our proposed reduction is about $75,000. That is a layoff of a staff member. You can see our net budget would... Net budget after reduction would be about $11.6 million. So, again, as I alluded to, our core services, what we provide is the accounting, is our biggest function. Within accounting, we have accounting, obviously, the keeping of the books for the 87 funds that we have, accounts payable, which is the section that pays all the bills, accounts receivable, that does our miscellaneous billings. Then we have budget and revenues portion, payroll and benefits, pretty self-explanatory, and then, again, the risk management. One portion of our department that's kind of a leftover from prior enterprise services is live scan. That's the fingerprinting operation that's done in our front counter. We have a couple individuals that fingerprint, a fair number of folks within the city. All the employees are fingerprinted, and we have constant streams of people coming in for fingerprinting.
Where's the purchasing department? Is there... Do you have a purchasing?
Yeah, we do. Left it off. I apologize. You can see it...
No, I saw it. That's why I'm asking.
Ads there.
Okay. So, you do have a purchasing department?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Purchasing department is the purchasing manager. We have a senior buyer, two buyers, and a couple clerical staff. So, what have our reductions been since '07, '08? We eliminated the assistant director position. We downgraded the former purchasing administrator to a manager. We eliminated two vacant positions, once they were vacated. We've reduced our hourly and temporary staffing. We used to have... Part of our accounts payable operation was temporary staffing. We eliminated some contractual services. That was part of our PeopleSoft consulting. That was transferred to... Those functions were transferred to IS. We eliminated the cost of producing the budget summary book, which was kind of the pamphlet version of the budget book. And as I alluded to, enterprise services, that was a function that was a standalone operation within the old police department that used to do passport photos and processing for citizens. There was a fair-sized staff that was over there. We closed that up and brought the live scan component back to our front counter, which is one full-time person and an hourly. At this point, the rest of the folks were laid off. Some of our statistics, we have received the GFOA award for the CAFRA for many, many, many years, long before I got here. We have, though, since I've got here, produced a GFOA award-winning budget, which basically means you go through their 15, 20-page guidelines and produce a budget with all their recommended guidelines. Throughout the year, we process about 55,000 paychecks or deposits for the employees, processed about 107,000 accounts payable invoices, issued over 1,200 purchase orders and contracts, and processed about 406,000 journal entries or journal line transactions in the 78 funds that we have. There's a tremendous amount of volume. If you think of a fund as a subsidiary, a small company, we roll those all up in the CAFRA and in the entity-wide statements and present that each year to council. Some of the professional services that we have, you heard John Bartel speak a few weeks ago. We use him for our actuarial evaluations. He bills us as we need him for the valuations. We do have him do evaluations for our OPEB liability and other disclosures that we have. He helps us with costing items. We use Capital Accounting Partners. That's the firm we selected through an RFP process for our cost allocation plan. That's done each year for the budget in preparation to distribute the general fund, internal service department costs out on a ratable method. Aon is our insurance broker. That's in the liability fund. Armtech is our insurance actuary. That's also part of the insurance fund. But Gladreine Pullen is our annual auditor. They're the ones that come in and do the audit every year, spend about three months in our small conference room. For revenue management purposes, we use HDL Corn &amp; Cone and HDL and Associates. One is for sales tax, one is for property taxes. And I will note, these amounts are half. We share the other half with the redevelopment agency. They pay the other half. These are very vital to revenue management, much like muni services, the one down at the bottom. They're our monitor for our utility users' tax, which is one of our largest revenue sources. Welldan was our one-time... Muni Services, down at the bottom, they monitor all our utility users. They monitor all the telecom companies to make sure that they remit our utility users' taxes appropriately. MGT America, we don't use them very much. They're... Do our SB 90 claims. Those are our state-mandated costs where we can get reimbursement from the state. So, they file those for us. We only pay them when we get reimbursed. So, $20,000, give or take. It depends on how much we get reimbursed within a year. As far as our budget, those are our salaries. We have no overtime budgeted within our department. We have a very small, couple hourly folks that do filing for us. We've had a reduction in our M&amp;O, and primarily that's the reduction in the information systems, rate methodology, and Mr. Fraga will talk about that when he gets into funds, but that's the majority of that is a reduction in the charge from ISD to our department. It's the billing that we get from the information systems department. They charge us for PeopleSoft and some of the...
So, it's the internal service foundation, which we'll look at at a later point?
Correct. Maybe today, if we can get to it.
Okay. If I stop asking questions?
Nope. Ask all the questions you want. So, what we did, we broke our function down. Obviously, most of ours are, again, as a back-office function, are pretty essential, although we did break our department out in the methodology, as everybody else did, essential, priority, and discretionary, and have a proposed reduction of $75,000. The breakdown of our essential programs, obviously, accounting. We lumped administration and live scan together. Live scan is a small portion of that. Budget, payroll, purchasing, and accounts payable, those are all our core functions, at least for the essential portions of it. We pulled a little bit out of purchasing and accounts payable for the priority programs. If we had to reduce services, these are the areas we would do it. And then, live scan is really, to us, a discretionary program. Yes.
You said if we had to reduce services, you would be reducing purchasing and accounts payable?
Correct.
And how would you be able to reduce that? Isn't that salaries, basically?
Limit it, lay off. As I mentioned about live scan, that's the fingerprinting, the electronic fingerprinting that we do at the front counter. It's really not a core function of the finance department. However, it is self-supporting, so it is... We wouldn't recommend getting rid of it at this point.
What was it last year that we... Were we in the black with this on last year?
Yeah, it breaks even. It covers its costs. We submit, we get a fee, and then a lot of it's a pass-through to the Department of Justice and the FBI. But we have a lot of companies that come in that are on contract, they come to school district, they all come in. I frankly am shocked at the number of people that come in and get live scan.
Have you been fingerprinted lately?
No, I have not been live scanned yet, but I think today I will be.
I will confess that. My husband and I were live-scanned last year by Glendale for the adoption that we are trying to do. It's a great service for the community. I don't know where else you'd go to get live scan. I think there's probably something out there, but...
Some agencies, some cities offer it, not a ton. It varies, but I... There are a lot of people standing out there every day. I'm truly amazed.
Absolutely. Anyone who's trying to adopt has to be live-scanned and...
Anybody, security guards, tow truck drivers, I mean, the teachers, nurses, you name it, they have to be fingerprinted.
And the fingerprint goes... And it's printed, and it goes to the agency that's requiring it?
Yeah, it's an electronic submission of the fingerprints.
Oh, so it's both? You can print it and submit it electronically as well?
They also get records of, if you're arrested for anything, I think it's automatically sent.
Yep.
Wait a minute. I might need your services. Not personally, but for hires and stuff. So, something to the effect of... And there's businesses, I'm sure, out in the community who might benefit from your services. So, if a business wants to do a background check, is that the best way of doing it?
Well, this is a component of it.
Okay.
Fingerprinting, and that's... We send it in, and they get whatever results. I mean, like the school district, they get the results.
Okay.
The hospitals, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry for coming in late.
You want to make up the...
You're right on time.
Is Dave here?
We'll fill you in. Enough said.
I'm sorry. I'm just returning from an MTA meeting, and I left their budget early, and they're sending me nasty emails, and it's one of those things.
Okay. We'll catch you up. Don't worry. We're just starting finance.
Did we finish fire?
We finished fire.
Fireworks or fire?
Fire.
Did I miss something? Everyone's smiling and...
Fire was smoking.
You didn't miss anything.
I'll have to watch the replay.
Dave here, we send you nasty emails, so...
Okay. Mr. Elliott, let's continue.
So, our proposed reduction is a one-fill position within our department. The net result would... Basically, we'd have a little bit slower service to the departments, but I think we can make do with less staff. So, internal service funds, I wanted, before I jumped into the liability fund, I just wanted to give a brief overview again, remind what internal service funds are. We do have a lot of them, and I'll show the list in a minute. They're very much like our enterprise funds. They're designed to be self-supporting through rate charges. The difference being, the only customers are the city themselves, within the departments within the city. And over time, some of our internal service funds were underfunded and got some rather large deficits, which I'll show in a second. But just to break down some of the various internal service funds and what we have, we have the workers' compensation fund that basically protects our workers with injuries and claims that are filed there. We charge that out to all the departments as a percent of payroll. Vacation and compensated absences or comp time is another internal service fund. We have the retiree health savings plan, which we've talked a little bit about, is an internal service fund. Those are all funded with percentages of payroll. We have increased those to eliminate the deficits in the ones that have deficit fund balances. Medical, dental, and vision, we get the rates from our broker, Keenan, and those are plugged into the budget. Those are then basically put into the medical or dental or vision fund for payment. So, all the departments within the city have a charge in the benefit line item for these items. They're then basically transferred into these funds and then paid out of there. That way, we can see what the total cost for those functions are. Mr. Fraga will go into the services of information services. We went through an exhaustive rate development for ISD after he came on board, broke the ISD department into three distinct, different funds, and created rates to charge all the different users based off different components, like the number of PCs you may have within a department, you get a certain charge, the number of radios in a certain department, you get a charge from the wireless fund, so on and so forth. So, there's a very intricate way that the rates were come up, established for ISD and the charges accordingly. Prior to putting those services into the three internal service funds, I think there were in eight or nine different places, some of which were in the general fund. There were different capital funds set up. We consolidated it into three distinct funds, and he'll go into that in his presentation.
Can you stop for a minute? Madam Mayor, I just want to let the people, the staff at GTV6, I want to notify them that I want a copy of this meeting when we're done today, so we're clear on that. Just, I don't want them... I don't want to go there after we're done here and them not be aware of it, so I want a copy of this meeting today. Thank you.
Two copies. I want to see what I missed.
The meeting will be uploaded, and it will be available online.
The meeting's on... Meetings are catalogued and available on the internet at our website.
See what we... We'll work on providing...
Okay. I think they heard Mr. Menucha's request, so let's move on.
The last item on there is the fleet, the fleet charge that Mr. Zern talked about when he presented his budget. It's the consolidated fleet fund that we have with takes care of all the vehicles and equipment, and then there's a charge going back to each of the user departments. Again, if the charges are compiled for the budget process, if there's changes during the year, we keep the charge the same and then reincorporate whatever changes we have the following year. So, you're always, in a sense, a year in a rear on the charges, but eventually we'll get caught up into the rates. So, these are the... All the different internal service funds we have. These were the fund balances as of 6/30/2010. The highlighted ones in yellow were the ones that we have deficit positions in. And most notably is the workers' compensation fund, which we had raised the rates on to try and eliminate some of that deficit. So, going into the liability insurance fund, that's exactly what it is. It's basically our mini-insurance company. Our staff and finance work hand-in-hand with the city attorney's office. When claims are filed, they look at the claims. Oftentimes, the claims are rejected to see if there's anything there. We have a new management system, IVOS, the Internet Valley Oak system. It's a claims management system that we implemented in the last year and a half to track all our claims management, much like an insurance company or a third-party administrator would have. And that's jointly operated with finance and city attorney's office. The other component of that is obviously buying insurance. We have a number of different policies. We have general liability, excess workers' comp, employee practices. We have boiler and machinery for the utility. We have aviation insurance for the helicopters and special events, some of the policies that we have. Some of the challenges we have in this fund, obviously, there's increasing costs with claims and the expense of claims and settlements, some of our premiums, and some of the other things that are coming by way of the state or the federal governments. The budget for the fund, again, there's only three folks that are budgeted in this fund, so most of our expenses are on claims, premiums for the insurance. The revenue side of it, obviously, is the charges that we compile and charge back to the departments to pay the claims within this fund. So, our combined budget is our general fund and the liability fund. Again, with our proposed reduction of $75,000, we'd have a net budget of $11,600,000. That's pretty much it. I can go back.
That's fast. I want to talk about the funds that have a deficit in them.
Okay.
The liability insurance recovery workers' compensation fund, where there's a $60 million deficit in there, and how did that deficit come about, and what are we going to do about it?
Well, two things. One, the fund wasn't funded as the claims expense was increasing. The premiums or the charges to the other... To the user departments, all the departments with staff, the charges were not increased ratably enough to keep the fund out of a deficit. So, the claims, not only was the revenue deficient, the claims costs were increasing. Most of the claims, and I'm not a workers' comp expert, but most of the claims are... What's the right word? Mandated, or the expenses are mandated through presumption of... the right word, mandated, or the expenses are mandated through presumption of.
Mr. President?
Mr. Carson. The costs of the claims are presumed within the different fire or police, there's a lot of costs involved and expenses for treatment of those various claims, so again, the claims expenses were going up and we didn't have sufficient revenues to cover that.
Okay.
Mr. Tarver?
I just want to note, on internal service funds like the compensation insurance funds, I think you get a truer picture if you look at the balance sheet in the CAFRs, because you've got a split out of the different kinds of liabilities, current and non-current, long-term. Those funds will have reserves for open cases that are really estimates of what it may cost long-term, and those all feed down eventually to the total net assets or fund balance. You also need to look at the current assets listing in those funds and see where your cash position is. And in the case of workers' compensation, for example, it has at June 30, 2010, almost a 14, actually it has a $14 million cash position, it has $8,577,000 in claims payable, which are current liabilities, $22 million in non-current liabilities, which means many of those are reserves for cases that they anticipate in a conservative way, could eventually result in that much, but like liability, they won't know until we get into those later years. That brings the fund balance down to $16,700,000, so it's not as if it's relying on the cash from other funds to float its operations. It has an adequate cash position, in fact, it has about one and a half years of cash position based on actual claims that are paid, but in, from the standpoint of an annuity, or actuarial perspective, you want to make sure that you're covering also a reasonable level of the claims that may be there in the future, and that's what the fund balance needs to be getting itself back to, is an adequate reserve for those non-current liabilities that may be coming due in subsequent years.
And non-current liabilities, how far do they go, non-current?
Well.
Basically, non-current means that.
Beyond a year.
Over a year.
Yes. And those are valuations where we have the insurance actuary come in and look at the claims in the system, are trending, and they come up with an estimate of what those long-term liabilities are incurred but not reported claims.
Why would we have long-term liabilities for workers' comp?
Because we know there's claims that are coming or expenses for long-term claims that are going to be ongoing if.
Beyond the year, we have.
Oh, yeah, some workers' comp claims, for example, won't be permanent and stationary for a year or two, sometimes longer, in which case you may anticipate some eventual rating on an individual, but you may not get there for a year or two, especially if it's a contested case, and then you're going to have your claims expense along the way, you may have medical expense along the way, and yet you won't know exactly what the ultimate liability is going to be for some time out there. That's why I think in the upcoming year, we're anticipating doing an actuary audit.
Yes.
Of workers' comp, to begin to help us get a better handle on what some of these future exposures may be.
Because this gives me a couple indications, we're either not accounting for it properly or there's, the organization has an issue with workers' comp claims.
Well, I can assure you, we're accounting it properly, the, part of the long-term liability built into the balance sheet, as Jim alluded to, is we could have claims, ongoing claims for folks that were injured 20 years ago, and we're still paying the claims on those because they've been permanently disabled in the line of duty, so those.
But those amounts should have been accumulated, should have been put aside, or a certain amount, that's how workers' comp works.
It's put aside in the form of the liability is adjusted based on the actuarial determination.
Right.
So when we book the difference, you know, so if we get the valuation each year or every other years, we have been, we book the difference in the liability expense, expense that portion, and that helps create the deficit, but that actuarial liability is the estimate in the actuarial, actuarials estimation of what those costs are going to be cradle to grave, so some of those, we have no idea what they're going to be, but it's an estimate based off the injury, the type of injury, the ongoing claims, I know there's a lot of variables in there, again, I'm not a comp expert, but from an accounting standpoint, that helps create the deficit. Now, if the actuary comes in and looks at our claim inventory and says, geez, you know, some folks have fallen off, they've passed away, whatever, that long-term liability could be greatly reduced, we'd make the entry, part of that deficit would go away, so that's what Jim was referring to in terms of, we have cash, sufficient cash to make our claims payments, but that long-term piece is that actuarial component.
I understand, it's, we have enough cash to make our minimum payments, but the credit card is still full, basically, that's what's coming out to be. Is that the only way that we're planning on addressing this issue, through the actuarial valuation, or do we have any other, any other processes in, that we will implement to address this issue?
Would have to refer to Mr. DeWeller, Mr. Belluley.
From a budgetary standpoint, that's, Bob mentioned that we have taken the balance sheet deficit positions, and we have increased our rates so that over six years, we maintain the rates for our current operations, plus we've added an addition to our rates to make up any of the existing deficit. Now, so in six years, these funds should be whole, funding the ongoing plus these deficit positions. The actuary will tell us whether or not this fund balance is accurate, and whether or not the rates that we currently structured are going to be adequate. There's a second component that I think we will need to undertake at some point, and that's an audit of our workers' compensation program, where they'll come in and actually look at your claims administration, how you're administering it, how you're concluding your benefits, they really look at more of the operational component, and I think that's kind of the second part to this, the actuary will get to whether or not our reserving process is adequate, whether the values are appropriate. The second component is really a programmatic audit, where they come in and they look at how you're administering your fund, how you're making your decisions about your open claims, you know, which ones you're settling, which ones you're not settling, and it gives you tips then from an operational standpoint, how to fall within whatever the industrial guidelines are for workers' compensation claims, that's kind of the second piece.
And the charges are to the other funds, right?
Yes, they're to all the other funds.
Okay, Mr. Nagerian and Mr. Quintero.
There's workers' compensation claims and there's workers' compensation claims. Metro had a huge problem with exactly this sort of situation, and they partly solved it by implementing a more aggressive defense program in terms of attorneys, and they started to get it under control quite a bit, so as they do that, I mean, you can just accept the claim and pay it, you can challenge it a little bit, or you can go quite aggressively and really challenge the basis of the injuries and the causation, so if we're that deep in the hole on that, perhaps we may consider some more sort of aggressive action in terms of the litigation end of it.
If I can, that's what the audit would tell you, when they come in and look at how you're actually managing your claims, are you being aggressive enough, are you not being aggressive enough, there's a balance between aggressiveness and then as a result, getting into too much of an adversarial position, because, as you know, the workers' comp laws are structured for the benefit of the employee, so it is a bit of an uphill battle, and in my experience, it's achieving that balance between serving your employees, because the purpose of workers' compensation is to provide them with the benefits that they deserve, and though defending enough so you're not, you know, incurring costs that you shouldn't be responsible for. So I think there's two pieces of this, one is the programmatic audit, which looks at that, then the actuary, which actually looks at whether or not the way you're reserving the numbers you have in your fund are adequate, or maybe more than adequate, in which case there could be adjustments, and we should be doing both of those in the course of the year, while we set our rates at a level to make sure we're addressing the current numbers that we have, and that's what we've done in terms of our rates.
Mr. Quintero.
Before we even get the audit, I'd like to have a report, have the council provide a report, in terms of some sort of matrix, what are we facing, what's the historical data in terms of how many psychological issues, bad backs, broken bones, just to get a feel for what it is that we're dealing with.
If we can get it by department as well, that would be good.
Now, in terms of the fleet equipment management, that's quite a balance, $25 million, almost $26 million. Historically, how much of that balance is used every year? We've got a $26 million reserve.
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I can tell you, that looks like a lot of cash, but that's basically the sinking fund for replacement of all 1,100 vehicles, so in times when, there's a year where we buy two or three fire trucks at seven or eight or 900,000 a pop, we just bought a whole slew of new motorcycles for the motor officers, that balance gets hit pretty quick. So again, that roughly should be equivalent to the accumulated depreciation of all the vehicles in the fund. I will tell you, we're working with public works to do a detailed 10-year plan on equipment replacement, so we know what that number should be, based off the equipment we have, and then see if we can stretch the equipment longer, reduce the rates back to the departments.
Well, in addition to a 10-year plan, I'd like to see a one- or two-year plan, just curious as to how much we'll be spending in the next couple of years and where, replacing the lead in equipment.
Mr. Tarver? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to comment on the fund balance, again, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but this number is principally driven by the figure that's actually called total net assets on the balance sheet, not necessarily the fund balance as we think about it, which is money available for appropriation. The actual cash, it includes, for example, the remaining value of machinery and equipment. The cash position in that fund is about $17,300,000 at the end of 2010, so if you're looking at how much money you have to replace equipment, that's actually the money that you have, not the 25, but the 17 million. We have roughly $30 million in machinery and equipment, less $17 million in depreciation, or $13 million in capital assets, but you can't use that to buy more equipment, and it's not really spendable resources, so when we look at these numbers, we need to make sure, if we're talking in the internal service funds about fund balance, is it actual cash available, or resources available for appropriation, or does it include the value of assets in the fund, because these different internal service funds will include assets.
Correct, absolutely.
So that's the distinction we need to always make as we talk about internal service funds.
Then the next question, then, how about the application software replacement, how much do we have there? It shows almost 4 million, but it's probably less.
Yeah, that, no, that's roughly equivalent, at the end of 2010, its cash position was just about, in fact, a little more than that, it was $3,983,000, so you've got about $4 million in that fund available for appropriation.
And are we going to be spending that much in the coming couple of years? I see our IT department head in the audience.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, Ed will cover that in his presentation.
Okay, I'll wait till then. Then down to employee benefits, a deficit of $7,655,000, is it a lesser number when you look at the true, at the true number?
That fund has a cash position at the end of 2010 of a little over $7 million. It has a, it has a non-current liability, this is the benefits fund, right?
Uh huh, employee benefits.
Employee benefits fund, it has a non-current liability of what's called compensated absences, which again is long-term and something that we need to build up to so that there is a reserve there for paying off those compensated absences, otherwise what happens is they come out of each year's budget, if somebody leaves, the compensated absence is coming out of current operating costs. That's not the way it should be handled, but it's really a pay-as-you-go basis for addressing compensated absences. This, if we were to the point that this fund was in a positive position, then you essentially have a reserve to make those payments, instead of having to rely on the operating department each year's operating budget to make payments for those compensated absences. So once again, this fund has, the actual liabilities each year, at least for 2010, was a million three, we have $7 million in cash in that fund, so you've got in the neighborhood of four years of compensated absences that you can cover with your available cash. Now, we should be level where this fund is even with respect to long-term liabilities and short-term liabilities, so as a result, this is another one where over six years, we have the rates increase in order to get there.
How about 641 retiree health savings plan benefits?
This fund on the 2010 CAFR is $5 million in cash, and its current liabilities run about a million and a half, its long-term liabilities are about $11 million two, so you've got there three and a half, four years of cash, so you've got, you know, as we increase our rates, cash will be going up, fund balance will be going up, and over the six-year plan, you should be able to get these back to an even balance.
Yeah, and again, the retiree health savings plan is the value of the sick time that has been negotiated in the various MOUs, there's different payout rates depending on the bargaining group, when somebody retires, each hour is multiplied by $30 or $22 or whatever the value per the bargaining group is, and deposited into the ICMA RHSP account for use for post-retirement premiums.
I might add here, because Bob has worked hard to set up a program to address these, his predecessors, because I used to raise the same questions about the fund balance and frankly got kind of the same lecture that I just gave you on that, but the response would generally be, our cash position is fine, our cash position is fine. Well, on a pay-as-you-go basis, cash position probably is fine, but from a long-term perspective, if we're going to adequately reserve for these, then looking at over a period, a reasonable period of time, getting these back to a positive balance, will relieve pressure on the operating fund, get our rates at a level that then we can back them off to support the ongoing current liabilities each year, knowing we have adequate reserves in these funds from a long-term basis.
Mr. Menuchaian?
If everybody's done, I will, again, we go back to the issue of the OPB principles discussion that we had earlier in terms of the presentation that is being made today, I fundamentally disagree with the city manager in terms of what we should be looking at, these are audited financial statements, these are audited numbers that we're looking at, and I disagree with them, as well as the American Institute of Certified Public Accounts, as well as Governmental Accounting Standards Board disagree with what was presented. These balances are on an accrual basis, and you can't just look at the cash balance, you can't just look and say that I can make my minimum payment on my credit card, therefore I will disregard the balance of the credit card, well, I have four years of payments I can make on this credit card, but the 30 years of payments that I need to make, I don't have, and I can't say that I will not be addressing that issue. Fundamentally, these funds are negative, and I'll accept that, I think we do need to have a way of dealing with this issue, but we can't say that we have cash to pay for the minimum payment for the next two, three, four years, so therefore we're okay. No, we're not okay, these are issues that we have to be dealing with, and from what I understand, we are dealing with them, and if you're charging the other funds an additional rate, looking at the actuarial values, whether the values are correct or not, that's the proper procedure, as well as what Mr. Quintero suggested in terms of looking at the workers' comp issues, and as Mr. Nagerian suggested, in terms of being more stringent on the claims, I think those are certainly valid suggestions, but the balances are these audited balances, and that's what I will look at, not necessarily the cash positions of each fund.
Mr. Tarver?
Yeah, if I can, I haven't said that, I haven't said these funds are okay, and I haven't said the balances shouldn't be addressed.
I agree.
So what I've said is, and I tried to make sure you have an understanding, those of you who are not CPAs, understand that a complete picture of where these funds stand and what we're trying to accomplish is not necessarily accurately represented by that chart on the wall, otherwise, you get very concerned about, as you think about the general fund, if it had a negative position, I would be sitting here much more concerned than I am here. Mr. Menuchaian has described the plan that I've suggested is an appropriate way to address these balances, which is, make sure you have an adequate cash position, and then have a program to make sure you're bringing these balances up to a positive position, and over six years, the only reason I pointed out the cash versus ongoing costs, because that's reflective that six years is an adequate program based on your cash flow needs in order to get those balances up to a positive position. I don't disagree with Mr. Menuchaian.
And I don't disagree with you, though.
Mr. Elliott, do you disagree with anybody?
I agree with everybody.
Watch out, Bob.
I agree with everybody. Just to reiterate, part of our six-year plan was response to the auditor's management letter comment to get us out of these deficits, and also remind the council, too, that each one of these funds, we sit down early on in the budget process with either my staff, if it's something that we do, like the liability fund, or with HR staff, workers' comp staff, public board. fund, or with HR staff, workers' comp staff, Public Works, and dig into the detail and reset those rates every year with the goal of how's the health of the fund. We spent enormous amount of time with Mr. Fraga and his staff developing rates for the three funds in ISD. And we do that every year just to make sure that, you know, not to go overboard and hoard money, but that there's sufficient money to operate the services that everybody demands on for all these different functions and put money aside for replacement of equipment. Those are the sole functions that we do, or pay claims if it's tight.
Well, I also think you can draw a distinction between employee benefits, retiree health savings. That for sure, as Mr. Manukian mentions, that is a definite debt that will have to be paid. The workers' compensation fund, that's a little more sort of negotiable, and that's not necessarily a hard number.
Other comments before you go? Okay.
I raised the issue of the P-cards. How are the P-cards accounted for in general? If you don't want to answer, it's not part of the budget, I understand, but I'll ask it during...
No, no, no. P-cards is one of the methods that we use for procurement within the city. There's quite a number issued throughout the city. We've got tons of detail. You're welcome to see any and all of that.
I asked for it, actually, for the detail of the P-cards, right?
We provided it, but we can, however sliced and diced you want, we can get it.
I think we've given you a lot of electronic information on it.
You have, and I'm overwhelmed with the information you've given me.
Get ready.
That's why I'm asking you, did you give it to me?
There's more coming. It really is an easy way for procurement. The cards are not credit cards, they are procurement cards. They are restricted in terms of industry codes. We can set it for if somebody's in the Parks Department to only buy something at a hardware store perhaps. They're very restrictive. We can eliminate codes just by going into the program and turning things on or off. It's somewhat an efficient process because we get all the things on one statement and we process them that way. Can there be abuses? Yeah, of course there can. But they are monitored. They're monitored. Each statement comes into the departments, they review them, they sign off them, they come to purchasing, they're reviewed and audited sporadically, and then they're paid through accounts payable. In addition, internal audit is now looking at all the purchasing process in total, which includes the P-cards. So that report should be sometime within the next three months, I believe they're finishing on, looking at different ways, efficient or not, if we have control issues, which I don't think we do, but that'll be included in internal audit.
I think if you would spend a few moments with our purchasing agent, who controls the P-cards, as I did when the question arose about P-cards. Usually every couple of years, we get a public records like request in the LA Times for all of our credit card reports. And usually they do that, and then we don't hear any more because frankly they don't find anything there particularly. But Ashram, the purchasing agent, it's amazing how much control and how much data and how much information he has and is watching those P-card purchases. It might be useful to spend some time with him and get a sense of that, because I was very impressed with it. The P-cards give you a very high level of control and observation of what's being spent on them. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean from a process standpoint that the P-cards is the best way to be processing it, but we've talked about that as well with the operating departments. Because a lot of the P-cards are used for the things you would have normally kept an inventory of parts and pieces on. And a purchasing agent's comment to me was that P-cards eliminated in one department, they need to have three-quarters of a million dollars of inventory. But they have to be controlled, they have to be managed well. And crews need to do an adequate job of planning what parts they need before they go out in jobs, not running to the hardware store. But given that they need the parts and pieces, it's really a very effective way to control and to look at the purchases that are being made. Because it's not like a credit card, it is a procurement card that allows our purchasing department to program who has what limits and who's allowed to purchase what and under what circumstances.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, let's be clear. From the evidence you've seen regarding that P-card system, there's no evidence of any fraud or abuse?
No, no.
It seems to be a popular whipping boy for...
There was evidence of fraud or abuse, we'd have been following up on it. It's not as if we're not looking. We have looked, and no, there isn't.
Anyone who says that there is fraud and abuse in the program is wrong.
Well, we'd like to know where it is. We'd like to have the evidence so we can follow up on it. But this is not a case of where we're not looking, because like I say, if you meet with our purchasing agent, I think you'd be rather impressed with the level of controls and information that he produces on a constant basis, monitoring P-card usage. And the department heads are also held responsible to monitor the use of the P-cards within each department as well, and they have to sign off on purchases. Then they get reviewed at higher levels. So no, I'm very comfortable with that.
Mr. Quintero?
I have a broader question. The employee benefit funds and health funds and workers' comp fund, they have been underfunded for a number of years, I assume, four, five, six years? I mean, this isn't anything new. So I guess my question is, now that we are in this severe economic drought, is now the time to begin to fill these funds? If we've been working in this position all these years, why do it now?
That's why it's a six-year plan. I mean, it could be a 10-year plan. Frankly, I think Bob would have liked to have seen a shorter plan. And as we talked about that and the current constraints we're under and looking at our cash position, where we got to was, okay, a six-year plan is one that's reasonable. He can defend it, I can defend it. 10-year plan would be a little easier, it might save us a million or a million and a half dollars in the general fund, but that begins to make Bob and the auditors uncomfortable. I think Bob would like to have a three- or four-year plan. That would have really increased the pressure. So frankly, in that conversation, we came to, this wasn't me telling him, we have a, you know, professional conversation about what is the right way to address this, and we arrived at a six-year plan. And our commitment is, we're going to make that work.
Do you have any idea how our sister cities are doing on this issue, Burbank or Pasadena?
Off the top, I do not. I don't think, when I left Burbank, there was any significant deficits in the... Again, though, the rates were reestablished every year. I couldn't tell you if that was done here. I can tell you we're doing it now. And to follow up on Mr. Starb's comment, yes, I did propose a three-year plan to get us out of this. We did settle on a six-year, and the auditors were fine with that. That was our response to them. And you are correct, this is the worst time in the world to raise rates to our operating departments, and that's that line item. A lot of this stuff falls into that benefits line item. But it's something we have to do. We can't keep digging deeper and deeper holes. And likewise, on the ones where, you know, for example, in Fleet, if Steve's working very hard with Carl Vogli, the Fleet manager, to look at pairing down the fleet, you know, can we eliminate vehicles? Can we stretch them out? That will in turn reduce those charges out to the departments. So, you know, all these things take time. The Fleet, you know, we just got together a year or so ago. That'll take time to go through the entire inventory. Carl's still reviewing the operations of the four garages. Same thing with some of these other funds, ISD. They're only in their second year of a rate component as an ISF fund. It'll take time to get those mature and up and going and making sure that we've got all the equipment and servers and the number, 2,000 or whatever PCs that we have, have adequate funds to replace those. So it's a long-term process. That's why you look on five, 10-year cycles to see if those funds are going to be financially able to do what they need to do.
Okay, Mr. Manukian?
In some of the other funds, you had ISD, and you just mentioned ISD as well. I did not see the ISD in the Internal Service Funds. Where would...
The ISD funds is 603 and 604, and then 660, the wireless funds. Those are the three Internal Service Funds that ISD comprises.
I thought it was considerably more than this.
Those are just the fund balances. That's not necessarily operations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go to the public. Herbert Milano, followed by Harry Zavos. And since you spoke earlier, I will ask you to keep your comments specific to this department.
I will. Thank you. By the way, Harry Zavos had to leave on a medical problem he had, so he won't be coming Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. When you look at the number of employees, around 37 full-time equivalent employees for the Finance Department, and if you were to look at the number of employees from year to year, I would imagine that you'll see a fair amount of consistency. Even though the increase in transactions from year to year may be continually going up with the use of computer systems, you generally would find that that number of employees would probably be sufficient to be maintained on a year-to-year basis. The issue that I have is that a department such as Finance more than pays for itself by the type of work that they do in analyzing the rest of the operations. And enshrining a department like Finance or reducing their staff may reduce your ability to identify the type of analysis that is crucial for you to be able to have big savings somewhere else. Within the list that was presented here by Mr. Elliott, we see the elimination of the budget summary book. I personally find that particular loss fairly significant because it gives the one place, or used to, the one place where you could see at a glance, by department, the overall trends, so that I could, you know, piece together, it's sort of like a trend analysis, which is so crucial. The Finance Department has done a very much improved job with regard to preparing the budget, inasmuch as they are beginning to include some elements of what is called a popular financial statement, popular financial figures that allows the general public to identify in a way that it is easier for them to comprehend what's taking place. I would like to see the city restore this budget summary, because I think it is even more useful for the council as well, especially if you get to see it as a trend analysis and a 10-year trend and an ongoing year trend. It's very crucial, because for example, as you were discussing earlier with regard to the working compensation claims, the claims for at the end of the last year was 16.2 million. I went back to look at the year 2001, and I believe it was like 4 million. I may not be as accurate on this number, but if you were to look at the trends and the increased amount of the actual working compensation claims from year to year, it would highlight for you the areas that you would need to look at and figure out what policies should you change for this significant increase. And that's why I'd like to see a restoration of the budget summary and probably build up the popular financial statements. Thank you very much.
Sir, I didn't hear him very well. It's 4 to 60, 6-0?
Yeah, if I recall it correctly, at the beginning of the decade, I mean, around 2001, it was about $4 million a year, and now it's going up to that number.
Okay.
We're 16 now.
16 or 60?
16, 1-6.
1-6, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, let's move on to Human Resources.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'll be covering Human Resources. My name is Matt Doyle, Director of HR. The format for this is much the same as all the other groups that you've seen. We'll have the department overview, we'll have the general fund, and all the other funds. The other funds, many of which Mr. Elliott has already addressed thus far, we'll do a recap, and then if you have comments or questions. Our mission statement, to maximize the effectiveness, productivity, and performance of the City of Glendale's human resources through the development of a workplace environment which is responsive to the needs of the organization and its employees. Our primary functional areas are, there are six, and the little organization chart that you have sort of divides them into threes. The three on the left, Human Resources Administration, Benefits Administration, and Employee Training and Development are the general fund components of this department. Workers' Compensation, Employee Safety, and Employee Health Services are the, they're funded through the Compensation Insurance Fund, so that's a non-general fund budget. Human Resources Administration, again, if we could go to the previous slide again, just want to give a brief overview. Human Resources Administration is really the core services of our department, factors, the functions, including employee relations, our labor relations, recruitment and selection, the staffing to the Civil Service Commission. Those are all in that general category of Human Resources Administration. Benefits Administration relates to really the administration of our health benefits programs, medical, dental, through the staff that we have. The city has approximately 5,000 lives on their health benefits insurance plans when you add up all the employees, retirees, as well as dependents that are covered. So it's quite a bit of work for the staff to just basic claim issues and day-to-day troubleshooting-type situations. Employee Training and Development, it has its own separate bubble here, and it's not that it has its own staffing, but it is a separate fund in the budget. It's a general fund, but it does have a separate fund. And what that refers to is the citywide training that we do. Each department has their own very small training accounts that deal with trainings that are only essential to that particular department. This training and development budget relates to the generalized citywide training, things like harassment training, customer service training, some of the hard and soft skill training programs. Workers' Compensation, again, relates to the state-mandated workers' compensation program, which we must administer when our employees get injured or ill on a work-related situation. Employee Safety, again, it's the safety programs that we have throughout the city to try and comply with the Cal OSHA, a lot of the requirements there. And then Employee Health Services, it's a small component within our Compensation Insurance Fund, dealing with primarily the establishment of fitness-for-duty situations, preplacement physicals, things like that for the employees that we hire. As you recall, the previous fiscal year, we eliminated, closed down the clinic that was associated with Employee Health Services. We took that operation from six employees to two employees. The two remaining employees pretty much oversee the contract that we now have with Glendale Adventist Occupational Health and handle a lot of the processing of the paperwork for, again, new hires, fitness-for-duty, and various types of regulatory exams that we have to do. And again, that change saved us about $400,000 to $500,000 on an annualized basis.
Mr. Manukian?
I just want, we just got done talking about workers' comp, so I wanted you to address the workers' comp issue a little bit more.
Sure.
If you're going to address it at a later slide, let it go.
There are slides later on.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Again, you get a better look at our overall organization chart. Again, we have in the far-left column, and I'm not sure if you can see that, Administration, which is mostly the clerical end of our staff. We have Benefits Administration, and there are two staff members there, Benefits Manager, that's Martha Basurto, and her assistant Daisy. And like I said, they have a large contingent of, again, active employees, retirees to work with. The middle leg on the organization chart is pretty much the Human Resources Administration area. Once again, the, all the functions relating to employee relations, training and development, recruitment and selection. And you'll see most of the staff there are human resources analysts. These are technical professional individuals within my staff, and we utilize them as generalists. A lot of cities will have their staff in Human Resources doing, you know, they'll have one person handling recruitment, they'll have one person handling employee relations, one person sitting in on the negotiations. What I've done is taken my staff and really cross-trained them, make sure that they are competent in all these areas, and really assign them to specific departments to address those departments' particular needs. And this has worked well with our departments. I think there's a high degree of satisfaction with that. Again, to have their own sort of in-house consultant on all their human resources need available, literally 24/7, weekends, they all have BlackBerries, and they all get quite a bit of work to do, working for the various departments. And you'll note in the sort of the left-hand side of that org chart under Recruitment and Employee Relations, we have two analysts that are charged specifically to two different departments. You have a Human Resources Analyst 2 for Glendale Water and Power, and just below that, a Human Resources within the Police Department.
Which one is it again?
The middle category on the left side, you see there's two. And again, the Human Resources Analyst 2 is fully cost allocated. And again, the Human Resources Analyst 2 is fully cost-allocated to Glendale Water and Power, and the Human Resources Analyst is charged to the Police Department. And again, those two departments are large enough to really generate enough activity to where they pretty much need full-time individuals working on their behalf.
Matt, they reside in those departments?
Um, yes. Physically, they reside in those departments, but they spend a lot of time in my, in my operation, and there's a direct reporting relationship to me. Okay. The next slide relates to the Compensation Insurance Fund, the two areas of both workers' compensation and safety. In workers' compensation, you see a staff of approximately seven employees. Safety, you see a staff of three, although on the bottom, the Safety Services Specialist is vacant. And so, in essence, we have two, and we've actually had that vacancy in place for several years at this point. Again, these are the fund summary of all the funds that are found within Human Resources. The two primary ones that I manage are, again, the General Fund, which relates to the, again, the Employee Relations, Labor Relations, Recruitment Testing and Training. Also, the Compensation Insurance Fund, as it pertains to both workers' compensation, safety, and employee health. The rest of those are funds that, again, are largely managed by Finance as far as the allocation of monies and things like that. You have the Unemployment Insurance Fund, deals with, when an employee is separated, laid off, they have the right to apply through for unemployment insurance. And we just need to make sure we have sufficient funds for the chargeback that we get from the state on that particular function. The Dental, Medical, and Vision Insurance Funds are all, again, our health benefits-related funds. And the Employee Benefits Fund, we talked about that a little earlier with Mr. Elliott, the RHSP Fund, and Post-Employment Benefit Funds are those that relate to various benefits that, again, we need to set money aside for in order to fund for the future liability. This is a summary of Human Resources' overall budget. And again, you see the General Fund on the top, the top row there, and then below that, the Compensation Insurance.
I see you fixed a year on there. I have your prior PowerPoint, and it has 2010, 2011 in both columns.
We did.
I'm glad you fixed it.
I owe that to Mr. Allen, who tapped me on the shoulder yesterday and pointed that out.
Oh, okay. Because that's, I'm looking at the older version.
Yes. Again, the, these are the various funds, and what you're, what you're seeing for our proposed 1112 budget is some reductions in really the primary areas, the General Fund, the Compensation Insurance Fund, as well as the Unemployment Fund. You see some moderate increases in the, what I would call the health benefit funds, dental, medical, and vision, and that's as a result of the, really, the increased costs in those funds. The cost of medical in general largely outstrips inflation by a large amount. We do our best to work with our broker, Keenan, to try and mitigate those increases, but the bottom line is that they just do tend to increase each year, just the, due to the cost of medical inflation. And then the three at the bottom are, and Employee Benefits Fund, RHSP, and the Post-Employment Benefit Funds, as Mr. Elliott had already pointed out, he's in the process of funding those liabilities, and you see a significant increase in what's being charged back to the different departments to help fund those areas. The next slide relates to a number of staffing assigned, so we call full-time equivalents for these funds, and really, it's the top two that really relate to my department and what we fund. The General Fund relates, again, to those functions of recruitment, employee relations, and labor relations. We have five management supervisory personnel. We have the professional technical, so 1.5 individuals. We have our non-management, nine, for a total within that fund of a little over 16 full-time equivalents. Then in the Compensation Insurance Fund, which is, again, workers' comp, safety, and employee health, we have three management supervisory, five professional technical, and four non-management for a total of 12. And the entire department has, again, if you go to the bottom, 29.55 full-time equivalent staff. And you see from the, from the slide, Compensation, from Unemployment Fund down, there are no staff specifically assigned to those particular functions.
Manukin?
I don't like the full-time equivalent measure. I would like to know how many actual individuals are working full-time, part-time, or whatever, if you have those numbers.
I can tell you that very easily. We essentially have, in my department, two part-time employees, and that's what accounts for the, sort of the partial FTE. Within the General Fund, I have a City Resource Specialist. That's the top line there, it says .26, and that City Resource Specialist does special projects for me. If there's an investigation, or if there's a salary survey or a special project, I have that individual work on a, really, a sporadic basis. And again, her, the time she spends is approximately a quarter of a, of an individual. In the Compensation Insurance Fund, it shows 1.44, but I can, I can only, three hourlies? I can only think of one hourly.
You don't have to do it now, it's just, it would be better if we have in the future.
Okay. Is this position filled, though? Okay.
Not.
Okay, so there are three, but two of them are not filled. So really, there's just, there's just one approximate half-time employee. That person is working out of workers' compensation, and again, that's in the Compensation Fund. As far as our consultant services with Human Resources, we don't make heavy use of consultants, but when we do, these would be the individuals or the entities that we've employed. The big one, and this is part of our, our Human Resources section, is Labor Relations, Legal Services. We utilize the firm of Lieber-Cassidy-Witmore, really in two areas, just sort of for the day-to-day legal advice on labor and employment law matters. Some of these areas are very, very complex, and, you know, as much as an expert as I believe I am on these matters, there are times when we do need to consult with, with our outside counsel on that. And it's not just myself, but also the city attorney's office. Often, we will get on the phone and make a, make a call to that particular law firm if we have a particularly challenging Human Resources question. The other half of that is the special counsel that we employ to assist us in labor negotiations. You've met Mr. Chrysler, who sits at the table for a couple of our employee groups. This is truly an invaluable service. We are facing probably the most challenging and complex labor negotiations in the history of the city, where we're now dealing with not only more bargaining units, but really, you know, the whole issue of negotiating concessions and takeaways from employees, which is very rare. And, you know, the level of cooperation that we had gotten in the past, when we were always increasing benefits and pay, it's become a lot more difficult. And as you recall, last year, we had to do an imposition of a particular MOU on one of the bargaining units. And those types of things, which are just very, very complex, again, the services of Lieber-Cassidy have been extremely helpful. And even with that, we do have two claims that have been filed against us by a bargaining unit with the Public Employment Relations Board. And again, that's a very complex thing to have to deal with and have to respond to. And again, we utilize this law firm to guide us through that. And the other areas where we've utilized consultant services, in the safety, we have, that's the middle group there, ergonomic assessments, we have an industrial hygiene company, and a fall protection company. These are all specialized consultants that occasionally our safety office will need to bring in in order to address, it might be an indoor air complaint, and they'll do some air sampling, something like that, or ergonomic issues. And that's, ergonomics is a, is a very, very important area for loss prevention and the mitigation of injuries. A lot of times, you'll have an employee who's at their desk, and they have, you know, chronic pain in their shoulders or their hands, carpal tunnel, whatever the case may be. And sometimes, you know, and we'll bring in, we'll bring in an ergonomic company to do an assessment of that person's setup, and we may be able to adjust that workstation to make sure that those little aches and pains go away. If we ignore those types of things, you know, we may end up with a workers' compensation claim, someone claiming, again, a carpal tunnel or worse injuries, which end up costing us thousands, tens of thousands of dollars down the road. So those types of specialized services on occasion are important. In the bottom, we have preplacement psychological exams under our Employee Health Services section. On occasion, we'll, we'll do, we'll have the need for psychological exams, either for new hire or with an existing employee, to make sure that a person is competent and capable of performing the job. And again, we utilize Dr. Schaffer, who's an expert in employment psychological issues for that. So those are our consultants primarily. Focusing on the General Fund, as I said earlier, our core services in General Fund relate to the traditional Human Resources functions. Again, the Employee Relations, the Labor Relations, conflict resolution, the staffing to the Civil Service Commission. And by the way, not a lot of cities have civil service commissions. It's something you find in, in very old cities, and it's a structure that really, I firmly believe in. I think it's certainly worthwhile to have, but it is quite labor-intensive. We have two meetings per month, we have hearings on disciplinary cases, and it is quite a, quite a time-consuming apparatus, but again, it's something that sheds a lot of transparency on the work that we do within Human Resources. But we have that, we also have Benefits Administration, Training and Development. These are all parts of the core service areas of Human Resources. Here are some samples or some examples of some performance measures within Human Resources. 47, 55 applications filed, and this relates, these figures are based on '09, '10 fiscal year. Since we're still in the '10, '11 fiscal year, we don't have final numbers on any of these things, but we will have them in a, in a few months. But again, a lot of applications, a lot of activity in recruitment, even in a time when our recruitment is somewhat been slowed down. But in a year where we may do a firefighter recruit or a very active police officer recruit process, we could easily double that number of applications, particularly in this, in this labor market. 102 examinations administered. Those are actual exams, whether it's written, oral boards, performance exams that the staff has to, to coordinate. 3,029 applicants actually examined, in other words, people showing up to be tested for one, one area or another. 304,509 hits on the city's website for jobs. I've been told many times that that is the most popular area of our city website, is the jobs area. 1,139 personnel transactions. That relates to the various things that staff does, whether it's processing a new hire, a termination, a transfer. It's a lot of the work that's done behind the scenes. 1,934 job performance evaluations processed. There's a lot of talk about performance measures and how, you know, holding our employees accountable. We take this very seriously in the Human Resources Department, and we do track, you know, the, each supervisor's obligations to, to complete an annual performance evaluation on all of our employees, and it's something that we, we track. And if somebody's late on turning them in, we send them little friendly reminders, and I think the council may still get a reminder of those that are late. But something we take very seriously, and it's something our Civil Service Commission takes very seriously. We do a monthly report to them.
We do, we do get those reports. Years ago, that was a major issue, but it'd be pretty well shortened to time.
Absolutely, sir. And again, I, we, we go to other conferences and networking opportunities, and, and people ask us about our, you know, our performance evaluation system, and we tell them, yeah, we do this, this, and we get compliance with every employee, every supervisor gets the evaluation. And a lot of these other cities are just amazed at how we're able to do that. But again, I attribute it to, again, the staff, as well as the support of the council, and certainly our Civil Service Commission.
Well, if I remember correctly, though, the issue was at the department head level and the management personnel under that department head.
Yes, definitely.
But we're still okay in terms of time, they're not...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Couple other areas. 31 labor negotiation sessions held. As you all know, it's been very, very busy, couple of years, labor negotiations. We're, seems like we're constantly doing it, and it's not just in the traditional springtime that we used to do it. It seems like it's almost year-round now, we're seeing our employee groups. 35 ADA interactive meetings. The ADA interactive meetings are, again, these are attempts that we are obligated to do under federal Americans with Disabilities Act and the State Fair Employment and Housing Act. When we have an employee who's either disabled or has significant work restrictions, we're obligated to not only try and accommodate that particular individual by law, but we actually have to meet with them and conduct a meeting. That's one of the primary functions that is currently handled now by our Employee Health Department. And as you can see, we have a number, 79% accommodation rate. What that means is, an employee who's either disabled or has some major work restriction, 75% of the time, we're able to work through that and able to get that person into some productive capacity, either in their current job with some minor accommodations, or another job that they can handle within their work restrictions, or even another department if that's applicable. But it's something we're very, very proud of. 75 exit interviews conducted, 161 classes scheduled through Glendale University, 3,332 attendees through Glendale University Training.
Can you give us a little background on that again?
Sure.
Glendale University.
Glendale University is our in-house training and development program. We call it Glendale University. It's not, it's not, we're not talking about Glendale College or the law school over here, but it's what we do to provide training and development opportunities for our employees.
What are we training them for? And are they being paid during that time, that they're being...
Yes, they're, they're being paid.
That seems like a lot of classes and a lot of man-hours down. I'd like to look at that at some point.
Mr. Manukin got a CPA degree, I believe, from Glendale University.
I will say, these are not fluff classes. I mean, we've been doing these programs for years, and a lot of it, the high number you see there is mandatory workplace harassment training that we do for all of our employees. So that, right off the bat, that's, that's, you know, 1,600 to 2,000 employees. But this is not fluff. This is, we've done evaluations of these classes, and we really try to focus on things that we find that would be most beneficial and helpful to our employees' career. We even tell our supervisors, when they're evaluating their employees, if there's an area that they need improvement in, they need to look into our Glendale University training classes and take a particular class, whether it be, you know, improving their writing skills, or their presentation skills, or their customer service skills. It's a very valuable tool. If you think we're spending too much time with that, then, you know, we certainly can take that feedback and run with it.
I'd like to look at that. I mean, it seems like a lot, coupled with some of our other benefits that we offer in terms of post-secondary education, tuition, and all that. It seems like it's a luxury maybe we can't afford at this time when we're trimming...
Well, let's not confuse this with tuition reimbursement.
Understand.
This is not tuition reimbursement. As Matt notes, a lot of this is, it's training that as employers, we should be doing. The fact that we call it Glendale University may give it the wrong, give you the wrong sense of it. As he notes, half of these, half of these attendee numbers are mandatory training that we have to do of our employees, harassment training that we're obligated to do. The other half may be supervision classes, employees who need training for their particular... This is very job-related, and we're happy to bring in more detail, but don't conf... This is very job-related, and we're happy to bring in more detail, but don't confuse this with a benefit-like tuition reimbursement.
Yeah, but they're on the payroll while they're getting that, and it's helping them advance in the organization, so it seems like it's a double benefit that we need to look at.
In an upcoming slide, this is one of the few areas that we really are able to make some cuts. When we're talking about essential versus priority services, what you're saying is exactly true. So this is an area that we probably will see some reductions in, in the, in our later stages of this presentation, so. Okay, I think we covered that. Human Resources Department, general fund reductions. The direction we received was to look at reductions that have been made since 2007, 2008. Quite frankly, this department has seen major reductions. It's really but a shadow of its former self. If you were to look at this department back, say, ten years ago, particularly from a standpoint of upper management, we've taken significant reductions. Ten years ago, there was a Director of Human Resources, an Assistant Director of Human Resources, and a Human Resources Administrator. We no longer have two of those positions. We try to handle all of that through, really, my office with the help of the other staff, but we have taken some significant reductions over the years. But in the last four or five years, here are the things that we can point to that specifically have been eliminated from our budget. In '08, '09, a Human Resources Analyst II position was deleted at a cost of, or a savings of about ninety-three thousand dollars in '08, '09. Also, we had a vacancy for an Office Services Specialist II position, which we've kept frozen for, since that time. In '09, '10, we downgraded a Senior Office Services Specialist position to an Office Services Specialist position. This is in our benefits area. We reduced hourly wages by fifteen thousand in '09, '10, and currently, in the current fiscal year, we have yet another vacant position, which we've frozen, as a Customer Service Representative. The next page, the next slide shows the M&amp;O reductions. Essentially, we've cut back our M&amp;O every year for the past few years, significantly in some years, not so significant in others. But a lot of this is just what I would say, working smarter. As an example, I would point to a lot of our correspondence that we used to, you know, put in an envelope, mail, and incur postage charges. A lot of it we're doing now by simple email, a lot of letters and things that are going to employees, as well as job applicants, we can do that through email. Another area I would point to is our advertising for our recruitment. Now, so much of it is web-based, and it's free. We could simply find the right website and either pay a small amount, or maybe go to a particular organization or trade and get on their website, and get really the best, most direct exposure to whatever jobs we have. Twenty years ago, when I first started, the majority of our advertising for our positions was done via the Sunday LA Times. And if you've seen the Sunday LA Times lately, it's miniscule, and there's not a whole lot of advertising done. Those ads would run anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars apiece, and again, that's a cost we're no longer incurring at all. So we're seeing a lot more savings in the whole M&amp;O area, and just, you know, working smarter and doing a lot more with, again, with the training. We've gotten some very good deals with some of the vendors that come in and provide it, so. Okay, this is the general fund budget, where we're at and what we're proposing. We're seeing, or what we're proposing is a reduction in both the salary and M&amp;O area. Of course, you're seeing an increase in the Persian benefits, which is pretty much consistent with all the other departments that we're seeing. We've also put in, if you can see the second of the bottom row there, forty thousand one hundred and forty-three, that represents proposed reductions that we have in what I would say discretionary programs, as well as another, we threw in another fifteen thousand dollars savings in our M&amp;O. This is what we're proposing for our, for our cost savings for the upcoming year. In looking at, again, the assignment we all had as department heads was to look at our departments from a programmatic standpoint, and look at the types of programs that are essential, that are priority and discretionary. Again, as a internal service department, much like finance, much like the City Attorney's Office, we don't really deal in programs so much. Most of what we do are either legally mandated functions, either mandated by federal or state law, or just things that we ought to be doing in order to, you know, reduce the city's liability. I'm talking about things like, you know, responding to EEO complaints, our workers' compensation programs, our Civil Service Commission staffing. Again, that's mandated by our charter that we have a Civil Service Commission, we've got to staff that. There's Cal OSHA, there's negotiations, the Myers-Millius-Brown Act requires that we meet and confer with all of our employee groups. We can't just decide that, no, we don't want to talk with them and not engage in negotiations each and every year. So much of what we do is required, and when we're talking about, you know, things that are discretionary, the only place we can really look truly is, as Councilman Jerrion stated earlier, would be training, and that's where we're proposing that we make our reductions. So more or less, what we're proposing is a forty thousand dollar reduction in the training and development area, as well as, again, the other reductions we've seen in our salary savings over the years. Looking at, again, this slide relates to the essential programs that we do within human resources. Like I said, this pretty much covers mostly everything that we do, from employee relations, labor relations, the recruitment, the class and comp, civil service, staffing, the benefits administration. As I've said, we provide benefits, it's a lot of work. The, again, we have lots of phone calls, emails from active employees, retirees, that we have to respond to. And there are, there is a component within our training and development that we do consider to be essential. There are others that we consider non-essential. The ones that are listed here are ones that we consider to be essential. Harassment training is one of them. Under Assembly Bill 1825, we are obligated to provide this training to our employees, and we do so on a semi-annual basis, and we sort of spread it out over the course of the year, but ultimately, that's something we really can't not do. We have Glendale Leadership Academy and Glendale Supervisory Academy. These are two programs that are solely focused on our succession planning. The Leadership Academy relates to more managerial skills. The Supervisory Academy is more the nutsie bolts of immediate supervision and trying to teach, say, the next generation of supervisors how to do their job. This becomes very important. We're not, this is an organization that doesn't see a lot of turnover, but when we do see it, it's mainly people retiring, and the people that retire are, tend to be your most experienced, they tend to be your supervisory, managerial people. And when that kind of institutional knowledge leaves your organization, you've got to make sure that your people behind them are ready to go and step into those roles. I had a conversation with Chief DePampa earlier this week, and he was bemoaning all of the retirements that he's going to be seeing of some very key members of his staff at the command staff level, lieutenant level, and it's these programs that really will enable us to prepare the next generation of leaderships. Two additional training classes that we're putting in the essential category. One would be the diversity training that we do, and we've worked on that little by little each year, trying to get the entire organization to attend. We feel that this is a very important commitment to the organization, to make sure we continually focus on diversity. The trainer that we have is really good, a fellow named Dr. Joseph Dadorian, who's gotten very good feedback from employees. In addition to that, we have the CSTI training, which is a small piece of this budget. It's about, about five thousand, which we try to send four or five employees to this. This is, I believe it's called the California Specialized Training Institute, and this is what prepares our staff members at all levels throughout the organization for disaster planning, when we have a flood, fire, or whatever the case may be. You know, the fact that we have a pretty well-oiled operation when we open the EOC is attributed to a lot of the things that are taught at the CSTI, so. And these are those areas that we would consider to be essential. The next slide represents those that we would put in the priority area, and these are, I would say, more of the soft skill trainings, training programs that are extremely important, but things that we could do without, and one of which would be to eliminate one of the sessions of the Leadership Academy, and, you know, this commitment we had to training our organization on ADA awareness. Again, that's something we've made a commitment to doing, but again, if we get into a situation where we can't afford it, then we won't do it. Written communication skills, CPR, first aid training, these are things we would like, particularly the CPR, we would like as many of our employees trained in these areas as possible. Customer service, communication skills, again, these would be in that middle category of training that, you know, that we would put in the non-essential category. And then the fully discretionary, a lot of the computer classes that we would have, and again, what I would call soft skills, time management, public speaking, team building, supervisory introduction, and these are very important areas from our standpoint, from the standpoint of developing our employees, but things that, if push came to shove, we're willing to give these up. So again, with the reductions we're proposing, at least at this point, of eliminating the twenty-five thousand in the discretionary area, and another fifteen thousand in M&amp;O in the priority area for a total of forty thousand dollars. The impacts that these would have would be really none as far as staff. The M&amp;O reductions would have a minor effect on our contractual services and advertising budgets, our training budgets obviously, and office supplies. The next slide, the impacts as far as in general, again, just reduced training and development opportunities for employees, and there could be a small effect on succession That concludes the general fund. This relates to the other funds that would fall, I presume, under human resources. Mr. Elliott sort of stole my thunder on all of these, but essentially, these are the non-general fund-related funds. Compensation insurance, as I said, which covers workers' comp, safety, and employee health. The unemployment insurance fund, which relates to, you know, the charges that we get from the state of California for our employees who leave and are laid off for no fault of their own, and receive and apply for unemployment insurance. And then again, you have the health benefit funds, you have the employee benefit funds, which RHSP and post-employment benefit funds. And the core services within compensation insurance, again, these are the mandated health, workers' comp, safety, regulatory programs and services. Unemployment, as it's defined there, provides unemployment benefits to former employees who apply for unemployment. Medical, dental, and vision, again, funds our group health insurance plans. Employee benefits, as Mr. Elliott earlier addressed, funds the vacation comp time accrual and setting aside money for that, those compensated absences, that liability. The RHSP benefit fund relates to, again, the retiree health savings plan, the money that gets paid out on that in the form of accumulated sick leave to employees when they retire. And then the post-employment benefit fund, which relates to some of the funds that we provide, or some of the services that are provided to family members of deceased employees when that occurs. Challenges, again, in these internal service funds, Mr. Elliott has talked about the deficits in the comp, employee benefit fund, and retiree health savings funds. These will be amortized, the deficits, over six years, as he's already said. Some of the challenges in these funds as well, continue to explore Tri-City opportunities to reduce workers' compensation costs. We're coming towards the end of a significant study with...
How would you do that with Tri-Cities?
Well, we looked at a couple of things, whether or not we would want to join forces with cities of Burbank, Pasadena, for workers' compensation services.
Why would they, why would they take on a city that has a, or join forces with a city that has a sixty million dollar deficit to deal with workers' comp?
Well, the focus isn't the liability, it's more of the practices and the efficiencies that could be employed by perhaps joining forces. We all have, you know, elements, we all have staff that do roughly the same thing. I had some concerns about the program to begin with, but we're looking at that. There may be areas that we can save money by pooling our resources on, you know, attorneys or surveillance services, things like that. Also, and commenting on what Councilman Jerrion said earlier about taking a more aggressive stand on workers' compensation, that's certainly something we can, we can look at. We believe we do a fairly aggressive analysis of every injury, illness that occurs that someone is stating is a job-related. What essentially happens is, the person files the claim, the claim is stopped, the adjuster, the staff that we have, analyzes the claim, examines it, tries to get, you know, statements, witnesses, what occurred, that sort of thing, and make a determination as to whether to challenge the claim or to pay it out. Really, the objective is to, is to, A, get the person back to good health and back to work, really, and keep our costs, our medical costs low, and our litigated costs low. A small percentage of our workers' comp claims do get litigated, and that's kind of where a lot of the expenses get incurred, because when you get attorneys involved and you have different, different reports, and, well, we'll send you to this doctor, and they'll send you to that doctor, and it just kind of drags the case out, doesn't get that person back to work any sooner, but it creates, you know, kind of an adversarial system which, you know, is always not in the city's best interest. So we do try and deal with our workers' comp cases in a firm and effective manner, with the objective of getting the person back to work and back in a productive capacity. And that relates to the second bullet there, maintaining comparatively low rates of litigation on workers' compensation claims. We do have a very low rate of litigation compared to, say, the other cities we've compared ourselves to. Very few of our employees, you know, go out and hire an attorney, you know, the moment they get injured. There's some trust that the system that we have in place here will treat them fairly, listen to what their concerns are, that we would analyze it fairly, and again, provide the medical care that's needed. The third bullet there talks about continue the education, educating the organization in specific departments on accident, injury, data, and general loss prevention. This is something we've been undertaking in the last couple of years, really focusing on the big city departments. I call them the big four: police, fire, Glendale Water and Power, Public Works. And what we've arranged to do is have the workers' compensation staff meet with them on a regular basis, the managers in that department, make them aware of the cases that have occurred in their department, and see what, you know, what measures can be taken to prevent these types of accidents and injuries, to identify any types of patterns that may occur, and really work jointly to try and get these things resolved quickly, and as I've said before, try to get that individual back to work. And we started doing this with just police and fire, we expanded it to water and power, we started Public Works about six months ago. We're also meeting with Parks Department, because they're a significant department that has employees in a lot of hazardous situations, and we want to continue doing that. We've also started a process with... We've also started a, a process with, with the executives, where we meet with them at least twice a year to provide just to, all of the data on injuries, much of what I think one of you just asked for, by department, the types of injuries. And again, some of the things we can do to, from a risk management standpoint, to mitigate those, those injuries and those losses, working together with workers' comp, safety, human resources, and the various operating departments. The bottom bullet there, assess EHS, that's Employee Health Services' new role and capacity to continue to provide a robust wellness program through greater synergy with the benefits section. As you know, two years ago, the in-house clinic that we had for Employee Health Services, we shut that down. We now have a, a contract with Glendale Benist, and they've done a really outstanding job thus far. And when we did that, and when we reduced the staff, we weren't sure what level of wellness, general wellness programs that we could continue to provide. And we're, we're working to do those types of things and try and continue as much as possible with the two remaining staff members that we have. And again, they partnered up just recently with the benefits section, Martha Busserto, in presenting a, a health fair, which was actually fully funded by Keenan, which is our, our insurance broker, to provide some, some assistance to our, to our employees. So, we were proud of that. Again, this is just a general recap of each of those funds. Again, the Compensation Insurance Fund, which covers work comp, safety, employee health. You see the, the central costs of running the department, where you have salaries, wages, overtime, PERS, benefits. And then you have the MNO. The MNO, the bulk of that MNO relates to the costs associated with workers' compensation, the allocated expenses we have, medical costs being the biggest, legal costs. And that, that's an area that, again, as Mr. Elliott said, we need to begin putting more money aside for, for that. But that is probably the, the, the big chunk of, of expense in this particular area. Next one. The Unemployment Insurance Fund, you see Finance is recommending an adjustment, a decrease of $5,000. I assume that's based on what, what our pattern of payout is due. So, that one.
Are, were you transferring this to the, to the Compensation Insurance Fund hourly wages amount? Because they're both, the prior slide, the second line where it says hourly wages, it's 5,000. It's not, you're not taking that of one, putting, putting it in the other, are you?
That's just--
I know it's hourly wages, the other one is MNO, but I just want to make sure that it's not being taken out of one, put it in the other.
That 5,000 is merely just the increase for, for one year to the next.
Okay, so coincidence then.
Okay. Okay, unemployment. Again, the Dental Fund, we see a moderate, moderate increase in, in that, what's being set aside there. Medical, this, this reflects the increase that we saw this year in the 9% to 10% range. Vision is, is another one, had a moderate increase in what's being set aside there. Again, this is the, we're, we're getting into those funds that, again, have the deficits that, that are being addressed. And you see a significant increase here, employee benefits. You see a significant increase in the next one, the RHSP, then the Post-Employment Benefits So, in, in summary, again, this is, this is the, the budget. You see minor reductions in our general fund and our Compensation Insurance Funds. That's the, the top, the top two. And then the Unemployment Insurance Fund is going down a bit. And the health benefits, Dental, Medical, Vision, we're seeing a moderate increase there. And then the, again, the, the employee benefits, the RHSP and Post-Employment Benefits--
Why is that so high in terms of a percentage jump from 60 to 200? That's just the adjustment? I mean--
That's the adjustment, yes. This reflects the additional amount of money that Finance will be putting--
That's quite a large, I mean, that's-- They're severely underrated, or there was a huge jump in the liability.
You're looking at the--
Post-Employment Benefits Fund. It goes from 60--
And the RHSP.
Goes from 60 to 200.
Well, yeah, RHSP is, is a percent of payroll is a charge. These are the, the expected expenditures side. So, based off what, those are just the forecasted expenditures?
And, and the increase is 67% increase?
Right.
Right. And the other one's 200?
It's the one below that.
The one below that's going from 60,000 to 200,000. These are the fund, those internal service funds that have been historically not funded That is my presentation. If you have questions--
Let me go to the public, Herbert Milano.
Mayor Friedman, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. This is the last chart that you looked at on Slide 37. I think highlights the significantly many of the comments that I made in the past with regard to the trends and how important it is for the council to get the kind of reports on a regular basis that allows you to pinpoint those trends before you get a, a number that appears so significantly high. If you were to take a look at last year's, 2010, 2011 budget, the current effective budget, and you look at the summary of appropriations by department, you will see that Human Resources has allocated there $34 million. Now, if you were to look at a similar summary of appropriations for the city of Burbank or the city of Pasadena, you will see that included there, the, the amount that is in the city of Glendale would be allocated to all the other departments. It gives you a better picture of the overall cost by department if on that summary of appropriations, you have all of these particular costs that you found on, on Slide 37, distributed and reported by department. And it is my suggestion that the city go back and take a look at the, the budget summary, where you actually can see the trends year to year with regard to what is taking place with regard to medical costs, employee benefits, retirement, post-employment retirement, by department. So, you can get a sense of how these trends are coming, and you can ask the relevant questions before you get to the point where you actually have a $18 million loss. The other comment I'd like to make with regard to the HR presentation is that it gives you an idea of, the beginning of how the department is performing. I'd like to see on a year-to-year basis a proper report on the full-time equivalents, because we really haven't had one, and most other cities provide that, especially by department and year to year. This way, we can really grab a hold of whether the number of employees are really increasing relative to, obviously, to the, to the population growth. But I'd like to ask some questions with regard to how many employee lawsuits did we, did the city have? Which accounts get charged and how much from the jury awards per year? And who evaluates the trends in the disability retirement? And who evaluates on a regular basis the medical cost trends and the amount that is shared by the employees on a year-to-year basis? Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Menucha.
Those are interesting questions, but I want to go to, to the initial issue of allocating to the individual departments. These, if you go to Slide 37, these costs, my understanding was are, are being allocated through internal service funds, internal service funds to the individual departments?
Correct.
So, okay, I just want to--
Again, the whole purpose for these internal service funds is to get a centralized view of what that component costs the city. Each department has, in their benefits rollup, all these different components.
Right.
And, and part of that depends on what insurance coverage the, the employees have within their, their department. That all rolls back and it is paid out of these funds. So, the, the whole intent of these internal service funds is we do get a centralized view and can see what, what the nature of these expenses are.
Overall cost is, and then allocated by the--
Correct.
Okay, do we have time to do City Treasurer? It's a small topic compared to the rest. Okay. Mr. Broke, your turn.
Wow, this is a surprise. Thank you, Mayor Friedman, Councilman. Thank you for waking me. Yes, you did say the operative word. City Treasurer's Office is a small office in both numbers and in budget dollars. Let's take a look at our introduction page. We're going to be talking about the department overview, the, the numbers in the department, why, what we do, and, and the people. And we're going to sit down and talk about the general fund budget. We're going to be talking about the dollars, past budget reductions, where we are today and future. We only have general, a general fund budget, we have no other budgets. Moving along, the mission statement. I think everyone here understands that the city's treasurer's job, in his most important role as investment manager of the city's funds, strives to optimize yield without compromising safety and liquidity. As part of a reference, we are so small that we really don't have any programs. We don't have any projects, we don't have participations, we don't have, we don't actually do partnering with outside groups. We basically have two functions that we do within the department. We do the investing for the city, and we do the, we basically do the banking for the city. So, it's investing and banking. We've looked, we've kind of blown up our org charts so that you not only would see those two essential functions, but actually, we can count the people. We have the city treasurer, the elected city treasurer. Majority of my time is spent in managing the investment function. I am assisted, ably assisted by an assistant city treasurer, and she manages the office operations and the administration functions, and is my backup for investing when I'm out of the office. Turn around and look, and reporting to her, she oversees basically the two sides, the two jobs that we have. The investment operations, where we have one individual, and then the banking operations, where we have two individuals. If you haven't seen the city treasurer's office, I probably, I can describe it, we, we function similar to a, a small bank branch, where you have a small bank branch that has a secure location for merchants to come in and make their deposits, mom and pop shops come in and make their deposits. That's our office. Our merchants are the other city departments, they bring their deposits into our office. We turn around and verify their deposits. We break down the cash during the, the day, we combine the cash, we bundle it, we make it bank-ready for pickup by an armored carrier service to be delivered to our bank. We have two individuals that work the teller windows. We balance our cash every day. Because of the amount of cash that we handle in the office, we operate in a dual custody environment for checks and balances. We want to have two people there at all times. In addition to doing the cashiering and the deposit operation, those two people do the regular banking operations, which means the adjustments, the calling into the bank, the following up, and also the reconciliation of basically the two main accounts that we watch. Again, the city treasurer's office, it's understood, pays in dollars the, the bills of, of the city. So, we've got the demand account for taking care of the bills of the city, and we've got the payroll account to take care of the payroll to employees. Moving over to that first box, whoops, 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 let's go back, whoa, whoa, whoa. We were talking about the banking operation side and the two employees we have there. Looking at the investment operations, we've got one individual there, and that individual supports my op, my, my, my function. So, when I turn around and purchase something, for example, this individual will take care of the paperwork. This individual will make sure that our custodian has the information that describes the bond that we're buying, so that that information is there on settlement day, which would probably be several days in the future, three days in the future, let's say. That individual also will make sure that maturities that are coming back to the city do come back. So, that is, that is something that individual does, plus the morning work. And the morning work is a treasury management function where we determine what our available balance position will be for that day. We look at the dollars that are going to be coming in, the wire transfers that are coming in to us, the tax revenue dollars that are coming in. We also have a schedule of the payments that are going out, whether it's a payroll day, whether we're paying a bond payment, we're paying net water, whatever the disbursement has, has, happens to be, that individual will track and advise me so that we can turn around and make sure that we've got enough funds on hand to take, take care of those situations. We usually look at our cash position for a week at a time, and we've actually, we actually schedule it out for weeks at a time, but we focus every day at least five days Our operation is organized whereby this individual provides the backup to the two people that are in the banking operation side. When one of those is on vacation, out on personal leave, out ill, this individual will provide that backup so that we always maintain on the banking side that dual custody. So then, just by the numbers, we've got a city treasurer, we've got an assistant city treasurer, that's two, and then we've got three staff people there. Flipping over, for the full-time equivalent staff, as far as management, two management, three non-management, for a total of five. Kind of take a look at some of the dollars now in the city treasurer's office. Past budget reductions, over the years, we've been asked to make a contribution, and unfortunately, since we've, we are staffed to a minimal, minimal level, we need five, we have five. It's difficult to make major contributions or, or budget cuts in salary, which would be the big number. What we've been able to do over the years is scratch at the MNO account. Over the years, we've returned or found savings of $6,300. Again, all those reductions were in the MNO account. We have, again, no programs. Mr. Menucha, and we have no overtime in the city treasurer's office, we have no hourlies. We have no paid financial advisors, and we have no consultants that we pay. General fund essential functions, this is our budget broken down, our costs broken down by FTE. On the investment side, we've got $276,000, and on an FTE basis, full-time equivalent staff basis, we're at 1.73. What we've done here, Mr. Menucha, and we're, we factored in the management, because we're actually working, working management. Sorry. On the banking side, that's 344,000, and the FTE on that is 3.27, for a total of $621,000 is what we're, what it's going to cost us. The FTE is the five. If we flip over, let's take a look at how we compare it to the previous year. Last year was 578,000, this year it's going to be the 621. That's an increase of 7.3%, or $42,000. And let's kind of take a look and see where that $42,000 increase is coming from. Comparing, drilling down a bit, looking at these line items, salaries, we've, we actually reduced our salaries-- our salaries by $7,200, and that's because we had a retirement. One of my staff with 20-plus years was replaced by an entry-level employee. We've budgeted nothing for hourlies, zero for overtime. I want to skip over PERS and benefits for a second, move next, to the box, to the next line, M&amp;O. We were able to find a couple thousand dollars in M&amp;O, and we have no capital outlay. So we were looking at reductions or cost savings of about $9,000. However, putting in the PERS numbers and the benefit numbers, the offset to those reductions results in a net gain of $42,000. The last is a slide is our General Fund Program Budget Recap, the couple of jobs that we have in our department are essential jobs. This is what it'll cost to fund that operation, and it's our proposed budget. Dollars remain at $621,000.
What I don't see, and I realize this is strictly the department budget, but I don't see the fees that the city pays, the either investment brokers that we deal with, or our actual commercial bank that processes the checks and so forth. Is there?
On the, on the broker side, or the fees for the, or commissions, if that's what you're looking at or looking for, there are no fees.
Okay, and then how about, for instance, I don't know who handles our regular payroll processing or whatever, say Bank of America, et cetera.
Uh huh.
I mean, is that who has the account?
Yes, Bank of America is our, our bank of operations.
Right, our bank of operations. Now, do we, or have we in the past, you know, year, a couple of years, have we gone out to bid on those functions? It could be Wells Fargo, Bank of America. I mean, are we, it seems like we've been with Bank of America for many, many years, but how do we know that we couldn't reduce the fees that they may, or?
Well, in the last several years, we've gone to the bank, and we've had cost adjustments from the bank. One time of 10%, and the other time of 15%. So they've, we've been able to negotiate that.
So we've never gone out to an RFP?
No. I'll tell you the reason why. Number one, an RFP takes up a lot of time, as far as staff time, for an operation of our size. Mr. Quintero, you have to remember that where I came from was from the banking side. I would sell cash management services to public agencies, city of Burbank, Pasadena, Glendale, these were my customers. I'm very familiar with the pricing structure out there of the banks that are large enough to be able to handle our relationship. Those banks that are out there that could handle our relationship would be Wells Fargo, Bank of America, Union Bank, US Bank, and Bank of the West. That would, that's pretty much the sphere. I talked to these, I talk with these banks, and I am familiar with what their pricing structures are. So another thing, too, is that I'm very familiar with the Bank of America operation since I came from that shop, and some of the folk that I originally started with are still there. So I'm very, very familiar and comfortable with what they tell me and what I see. So when we go and I talk with, when we set out to talk with them for an extension, usually a year or two, usually, they understand they've got to come back and give me some type of pricing that I would feel comfortable with. Now, you have to remember, too, a couple of years ago, I was thinking of leaving, it was a good time to go out, and I was thinking that whoever would come in would probably want to maybe test the water. It probably is a good time, but in any event, that didn't happen. So I'm here, so I renegotiated a two-year extension. Your idea is not a bad idea, because for the record, it probably is a good idea to double-check. If I get my staff to a level where we're comfortable, comfortable again, that we've, we're in a situation where we can actually manage the workload to find the pricing, that would be probably the good way to go.
And these are decisions that the City Treasurer makes, as opposed, it's up to the City Treasurer to decide what makes, or how does that work?
No, I can tell you, if council wants, we can do that.
We could go out.
Mm-hmm.
Well, what I'd like to see is just a schedule of fees. I'm just curious as to what we're, what we're being charged by B of A, and it's good to hear that they reduce our fees 15% and 10% on another occasion, but I'm, I'd be curious to see what. Then on the transaction side, in terms of buying the bonds and T-bills and so forth, you go directly and buy them from an exchange without having to pay any brokerage fees?
Mr. Quintero, let me tell you one other thing as far as the banking fees. The banking fees are not paid for by, up until last year, are not paid for by writing a check. So there was really no money leaving the city. It was not, it was not a budget item. What we had was a situation where we're paying and compensating balances, since we always had enough balances on hand, so basically, the value of the balances offset the banking charges. So it's sort of like.
Yeah.
You're paying in soft dollars.
They're happy to have the money.
Yeah, we're always paying.
Mr. Starber, did you have a comment?
Well, I was going to suggest that getting fee schedules would be one thing, but maybe contacting from some cities of our size with our level of investment portfolio and payroll, and finding some that are with the other banks, and finding out what their fees are being charged, so you'd see what they've gotten on a competitive basis, and that would be pretty easy to do.
Yeah.
Working with Finance and Treasurer's Office in those cities.
Yeah, yeah, we could check with Burbank.
That would tell you quickly whether B of A is in line with what other competitors are offering cities like ours.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
This is where we ask Mr. Bruki for another 25 basis points next year on our investment portfolio.
Okay.
In lieu of a budget reduction.
We will be expecting that.
Right, thank you.
I heard him promise. Anybody else here?
This is, this is where we decide to go with fidelity or Vanguard.
Okay, we're reconvening tomorrow morning at nine.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Because I recall that Friday, we did not have a budget study session. This is a recent edition?
Nope. It's one that we identified when we did the calendaring for this.
It's the one that I missed and everybody else. Everyone got the memo except me?
If you, if you were here for the scheduling of yesterday and the day before, that's when we identified this Friday.
I was here.
Yeah, yeah, I think you were here.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Thank you all again for your time.
Your turn.
Thank you.